I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 10th in the year 2024. This is Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time and in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on September 6th of this year. And the, uh, this meeting was also posted with the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Gangdan.
Here.
Councilwoman Prinsari.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have seven commissioners present.
Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please? Mike?
I see Matt, Matt, Tanya, Sophia, Eric, Cameron, you go swearing this morning, you get tonight's going to be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Uh, do we have correspondence? Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Um, we have one item that is adjourning and is going to renotice. So, um, that would be item 11 on the agenda, um, under new business. Bear with me. Okay. So it is case P2024-0042. It's a conditional use at address 415 Monastery. And they will renotice, and the date uncertain.
Okay. Thanks, Cam. And please let's let the record show that Commissioner Lipsky is at the dais. Um, okay. Do we have anything else, Cam?
Um, only if you'd like to go through the adjournments.
No, no, I'm fine with that. Okay, so let's move on to old business under, uh, seven. Old Business Item A is case P2024-0121 is an administrative amendment for 99 Monitor Street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Robert Vertebello from the law firm Connell Foley. Um, this is an administrative amendment, essentially a technical correction. Uh, this building was, um, approved by this board back in 2022. Um, it's a seven-story mixed-use building with 87 residential units. Five of the units, five of the 87 units are affordable units. Um, as we were finalizing the affordable housing agreement with the Division of Affordable Housing, it came to everyone's attention that the ordinance that was cited under the init, the, um, site plan approval resolution was actually the incorrect one. Uh, we had a, um, a redevelopment agreement dating from 2017 on this project that put us in a different category. Once everybody realized that, we just needed to make everything consistent. So essentially, long and the short of it is, no change to the number of affordable units. The breakdown just changes. So effectively, there will be, there still are two studios. Uh, there will now be two one-bedroom units as opposed to one. Uh, there'll still be one two-bedroom units. There just won't be any three-bedroom affordable units, and that complies with the ordinance that's applicable here. I do have a representative of the applicant. Should there be any questions, but this is purely administrative.
Mr. Chairman, at different times, obviously, there's scrivener's errors, and in the breakdown, counsel states that it is per the correct ordinance. So I think to be consistent and correct it, uh, there's no objection to it. It is as codified under the city code.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Seeing no public, I move to, to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, do you agree?
Yeah, staff supports the affordable unit revision. Um, staff just asked that the, um, the conditions enumerated in the staff memo dated September 9th. Um, they just, we just asked that the applicant agree to those conditions, but otherwise, we recommend approval.
Counsel.
Yes, we have no objection to that.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0121 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item B. Case P2024-0143 is a one-year extension for 975 Garfield Avenue. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, members of the board. Veronica Schmuel from Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant, 975 Garfield LLC. Um, I did notice for this case, and I have the original with me. If that could be marked into evidence.
Thank you, counsel.
So yes, we are here for applicant's, um, third and final request for an extension of, of the site plan approval obtained under P19-077, which was granted in 2019, September 24th, 2019. Um, applicant previously requested and was granted a two-year extension under P22-047, uh, which brought us to September of last year. Um, we are now here, obviously, again, for applicant's third and final, which would take us to September, uh, 24th of this year. Um, we're aware that this is basically just a belt and suspenders application. Um, it's just to keep our protections up to date. Um, the applicant is the designated redeveloper, uh, just finalized updating the RDA this summer. So we are just aware that we are out of time and will need to come back for a new application at the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Notice?
Thank you, Chairman. For purposes of the record, I've had the opportunity to review the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the notice, and counsel is correct, obviously, uh, with respect to when the request will run through.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Any questions? Anyone?
No.
All right. Thank you. And is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public.
Please come on up. Oh, I have one. Oops, sorry.
Good afternoon. Oh, sure. Yes. It's Lenora Richardson, and my number is 264 Randolph Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. And I live, uh, about five feet from where this development is taking place.
Okay, Ms. Richardson.
I understand that they're asking for an extension.
We have three minutes for you. Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I understand that they're asking for an extension, which I'm hoping you guys do grant, because, um, there are several things that need to be seen before they begin doing this construction. Uh, I just wanted to note that since they've done the excavation, the, um, backyard of my property is now actually cracking before it gets to the foundation of our home. I've asked them to also put up some type of tarp. We don't have central air conditioning, so our windows are open. So during that time, all that was coming in. I've had them come in. I've also taken, um, videos of the gentleman that said he was the business manager. So I'm just asking that before you guys do allow them to come in and start doing the construction, that you have somebody come out and see us. Because I'm telling you, with this construction, our houses are going to collapse, because we can feel the vibration through our homes. So if you can, have somebody come out, visit with us, so that they can see. Like I said, I've taken video, and I've also had the company, um, business manager come up and see that this is what's happening. I mean, that it's, it's going straight to the foundation. So once they start really drilling, we're going to have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Counsel, do you, uh, can you address any of that?
You know, I am here, of course, only for the extension, but obviously, I'd be happy to take down your information so that my superior in our office can contact you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please come on up.
Seeing no one from the public chair, I'd move to close the public session.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, again, anything? Any problems?
Very simple one. Um, staff just request that the applicant agree to the conditions um, associated with the original approval.
Yes, absolutely. We agree.
Otherwise, um, staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P20.
One second. Uh, Chair, is there a way to add to the condition that there would be a follow-up with the, uh, person who spoke today, Ms. Richardson?
That would fall on the building department. That wouldn't fall on the planning board.
That's correct. But of course, we'll take notice of counsel's representation that she'll get the contact information and reach out to Ms. Richardson.
Okay, Mr. Chair, now, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0143 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item C. Is case P2024-0131 is a two-year extension for 365, I'm sorry, 369 Witten Street.
I will also be covering this one. Veronica Schmuel from Connell Foley for the record here for 369-371, uh, Whitten LLC. Um, as the chairman just said, we are here for an extension of the approval for the final major site plan, which was approved under P21-030. Um, it was approved back on August 9th of 22, uh, 2022, and so accordingly, the approval expired last month, uh, August 9th. Um, so the applicant is now requesting the two years to get us to 2026. Um, the reason being, the applicant has a couple other projects in the queue that they're anticipating are going to take a little bit more time, including one that's also, uh, right down the block. Um, so they just anticipate needing a little more time to finalize, get financing, and get construction going.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, thank you, counsel. I think I'm more comfortable with one year.
We're okay with that.
Do you understand? Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Anyone?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the public to comment on this application? Anybody from the public?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, again?
Similar to the previous case, um, staff just request that the applicant agree to comply with the conditions associated with the original approval.
We agree.
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0131 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, counsel. Sophia, are you ready to go for, uh, item 17, the cell phone? I just, I want to get that out of the way. It's quick, you know?
Okay, if we could, uh, we're going to make one adjustment here. Uh, in new business, I'm going to call item 17. It's case P2024-0003 is a minor site plan for 412 to 418 Witten Street. Good evening, counsel.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Edward Purcell. I'm an attorney with Price, Smith, Schulman, and Dierminio, here tonight on behalf of T-Mobile Northeast LLC with respect to its application at 412-418 Witten Street. That's block 1705, lot 17.01. Uh, that property is located in the Todd North District of the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan. Uh, essentially, what T-Mobile is doing, and this is a permitted use, uh, in this particular zone, is attaching, attaching antennas to the top of that building. Uh, the purpose of that attachment is to replace, um, an existing facility that T-Mobile previously had in the area. The building burned down. There's a temporary site. Now, this is sort of the permanent replacement for the old site. Um, as far as, uh, there's, you know, it's mancillary equipment on the roof, a generator. Um, again, we're fully compliant. I do have, um, engineering testimony, um, RF testimony, and planning testimony. I'm going to try to keep it as tight as possible. Certainly, I don't want to go out and spend a lot of time on it. Uh, so with that, Mr. Cotrell?
Counsel, there was a notice package online. Do you have the original of that?
I do. Yeah, I have a copyright here.
Why don't we just get that marked, and then, yeah, Chairman, this has been the customary practice here. Obviously, these are cell towers. The board has heard way too many of these applications over the years, so, um, counsel, if we can keep it to the necessary testimony, the board would appreciate it.
Certainly. Certainly, Mr. Alampi. Um...
Chairman, it does appear to be the original of the electronic version of the notice that was received and uploaded to the portal. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Uh, Mr. Cotrell, can you go over your qual? I do. Sure, it's Joshua Cotrell, C-O-T-T-R-E-L-L.
We got you.
Uh, Mr. Cotrell, can you just provide your qualifications and experience? Sure, I have a bachelor's of science from Rutgers, Rutgers University in civil engineering. Have approximately 20 years' experience in, uh, site plan design. Last 15 years specifically geared towards the wireless communication, um, industry.
All right, Mr. Chairman, would you? And is your, is your license current tonight?
My license is current in the state of New Jersey, yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Cotrell, you prepared the minor site plan that was submitted to the city dated April 28th, 2023, last revised June 5th, 2024. Yes. Uh, can you just discuss what's being proposed with your site? So existing on the site is a eight-story, multi-residential, uh, building. Um, cons, on the, on the roof, on the main roof of the building, T-Mobile's proposing to install a equipment, steel equipment platform with your standard equipment and a gas-powered generator. On the penthouse roof, T-Mobile's proposing to install antennas on steel frames. Uh, total amount of antennas is nine. All antennas will be painted battleship gray to blend in with the sky. Um, and basically, that's it. All electric, um, telephone, fiber, um, gas will be routed from within inside the building up to the roof.
Okay.
And that's essentially all. All right. And that, and that coloring was made at the, made, that coloring change was made at the request of the, uh, city planner, correct? I'm sorry. The coloring request for the antennas? Yes, it was, yes. Okay. That, that's all I have for Mr. Cotrell.
Okay, thank you. Um, the generator, is it shock mounted at all?
Uh, there'll be, um, isolator pads mounted on the steel frame.
Perfect.
Underneath.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's it for me. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, um, how many other witnesses do you have?
Um, we have an RF expert to talk about, um, EMF compliance and why it needs to be at the hype. We don't have to do that.
We're fine.
We have a planner who can talk about compliance with the subject plan, although I think we're here. That's why we're, you know, we're compliant. That's why we're in front of the planning board.
Yeah, you're in compliance. Um, generally, I hate to say, cell phone applications, we look for the color. We look for any, you know?
I think we covered that.
Any grounding, I think, you know, unless anybody has any questions. Go ahead, Ed.
I have a question. Um, just, uh, um, you mentioned that there was a fire in the other building where these antennas were before. Um, considering the safety of the building, I don't know what building you're talking about, or how much damage on the fire. What do you plan to do with those antennas that are on that building now? Are you going to abandon them, and they're going to stay there, or?
My understanding is that they've been removed, and that there's been a temporary replacement site that's on air now. And then, once this is operational, what we're talking about, then the temporary site comes down.
Then it comes down?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, counsel. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Sophie, do you have anything you want to add? Any concerns?
Uh, no. Planning staff just asked that the applicant agree to the conditions outlined in the memo sent on August 9th.
Agreed.
Planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0003 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item nine is case P2024-0154. Uh, is a review and discussion of implementing new fees for zoning review as well as fees for planning and zoning board applications.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Great. So a lot of this is in the zoning, uh, division category. Let me give you a very, very brief explanation of what a zoning review used to be like. You had to make your application in paper to zoning. You pay a hundred dollars, and one, uh, revision would just get the application denied, and then you'd have to completely resubmit and give another hundred dollars. So that could be something as simple as, I didn't put a tree on my plan, denied, hundred dollars. Um, that being a process that was kind of onerous anyway, um, when we moved to the Tyler system, that kind of just went away on its own. So the online portal, you submit an application, there is no denied, resubmit, it's back and forth with amendments. Um, so the amount of time that's being kind of put in, or the revenue loss, is happening. Is that to say that it was fair to do a hundred, hundred, hundred? No. Um, but the numbers that, um, I've kind of balanced out here are better representation of the amount of time a reviewer is spending reviewing what we call a zoning review application, which you guys don't see. Those are the applications that are, don't require any site plans, and don't have any variances. Um, so in order to kind of normalize it, we just have it as fifty dollars a unit. As you can kind of see, it was a little all over the place. Um, but just the way to do it is simpler, how we do it in planning, which is per unit. Um, along with the non-residential, which was, again, doing something that was three different categories, flat fees, not taking into consideration that, um, it was much more substantial review, something that was 50,000 square feet versus something that was 2,000 square feet. The only difference was kind of $200. The amount of review, um, really should be comparable to the size of the application that you're reviewing. And that kind of, this number tends to really kind of regulate that. I only have one typo here, which is that it's $250 for the first 5,000 square feet, not $5,000 square feet. Um, that's my typo, but just so you know, that really means that the majority of businesses are 25 to maybe 3,000 square feet. So those smaller businesses are still paying the 250 review, um, which is probably going to be the majority of what goes through. A zoning determination letter, which you guys have seen, they come in your applications. There was not a fee for it. Um, there was no deck, there was no name for it, um, within the fee schedule. So what was happening, not just your zoning determination letters, but there's multiple things that, uh, determinations and certificates are required for. For example, driveways and short-term rentals. So what was happening was that because short-term rentals are regulated by Commerce, and driveways, parking in front of them are regulated by Parking Authority, there was a part where zoning would come in and review it and not be able to charge anything, because the zoning or the ordinance regulating that said zoning certificate. And we didn't have zoning certificate specifically in our pay schedule, even though that's exactly what we were doing. And I can almost promise you that zoning spends more time on driveways and short-term rentals than Parking Authority does. So this will allow us to charge fees for that and to properly do the reviews for that. Um, on to what you guys are more accustomed to reviewing. There's not a lot of changes. We no longer have minor site plans for signage and storefronts, and we changed the LDO. So the 1,000 flash fee also takes into consideration that we also had a variety of numbers here. That's based on, you know, the amount of time that, um, the reviewer puts in, of course, but then the majority of our reviewers are overseen by supervisor planners, and then they come here, um, and they're continuing that application all the way out through to the board. And then, uh, special meeting requests, those come from the applicant. It was previously three. It is now being changed to 5,000. That is very specific to the amount of money that it costs for us to run a special meeting. Um, and we're still barely making it with the 5,000. And so that, again, that, that's going to cover, um, the attorney, all my planners for overtime, uh, the stenographer, et cetera. Uh, extension of site plan approvals, which we've been seeing much more, is going from 300 to 500. And that's really it. Uh, other than one other thing, which is that we had consistently had a price per variance, except for the C variance, where it was 500 for the first and 250 for the remaining. So there's no discounts for the additional variances. You just pay per variance. Uh, you get one half off for this and that, but no, it's just 500. So I know I ran through those, but as far as like what you guys review, there's not a substantial amount, but the zoning fees and the processes are still under 345, so under this review, board's review.
Okay, thanks, Tanya. Any questions? Anyone? All right, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Attorneys? Nothing?
Seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Uh, obviously, we have Tanya's approval here on this, so, uh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of, um, implementing new fees for zoning review as well as fees for planning and zoning board applications and forward to city council?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Honored motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to item 10 is a review and discussion of certified artists Bradley Frisell, Shimona Stokes, Nicole DeMayo, and Maria Pavlovskaya. Formal action may be taken.
Good job. Um, okay, so I'm just going to stay here. Normally, I'd walk up there.
That's fine.
And I'll do this going forward. But, um, so the four artists that you just said are certified under categories one, two, three, four, five, and six, and the artist's , uh, review board, um, has sent them here to get approved so that they can be eligible for the certified artist housing. Um, new artist-certified housing units have come online. That's why we've seen so many artists coming forward lately, and, um, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Anybody? Any questions? Any questions? All right, thank you. Uh, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on these artist certifications? Anyone from public?
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed, and we have Cam's recommendation, so, uh, I will, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of certified artist Bradley Frisell, Shimona Stokes, Nicole DeMayo, and Marja Pavlovskaya as presented to the board and forward to city council.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, honored motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdan?
Aye, congratulations to all.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor to, um, to certify the artists, not memorialize resolutions.
Thanks, Cam. All right, let's move on to item 12 is case P2023-0039 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 215 Van Vorst Street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman. Um, Eugene O'Connell appearing for 215 Van Vorst Development LLC. Um, this is a notice case, and, uh, they have the original publication and notices. This is a notice case and, uh, they have the original publication and notices. Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. This application has been carried multiple times from prior meetings. Had the opportunity to review the electronic version of it. This is the original and it appears to be the original of that electronic version. Does appear to be in order, we're going to mark it as A1 for the record.
Thank you, council.
So, this is an application of for a five-story, six-unit residential building with eleven west street parking spaces. There are four variances for number of stories, maximum building height, lot coverage, and front yard setback. Just, I want to put on the record that back in April, we still, uh, we sent all our plans, renderings to the Polosuk community. Since, uh, April, we've had four separate email, um, back and forth about the, uh, application and the rendering. And most recently, we had a very collegial meeting that lasted a couple of hours. And we feel that we've addressed all the issues of the organization. And we'd like to thank Diane Case for putting time in to do this for us. With that, I have two witnesses tonight, Will Weckman, our architect, and Charles Height will be our planner.
Thank you, council.
Yes, I do. Sure, it's William Weckman, last name is spelled W E C K E N M A N N.
Mr. Weckman, good evening, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified again.
Thank you very much. So I'd just like to reiterate, uh, what Jean just said about, um, our meeting with Ms. Case and the community. We take, uh, neighborhood comments very seriously and, um, this was a, the design that we're presenting tonight was a successful collaboration. And we, we thank her for her efforts here. So, um, as Jean mentioned, uh, we are proposing a, um, five-story residential building, uh, for the corner of, uh, Van Vorst Street and Sussex Street. This rendering here is, uh, a view looking northwest at the proposed building. I leave this up just to give you a sense of what the project looks like before I go through the plans. The revisions that we made since the last, uh, since our original, originally scheduled hearing were related to the, the fenestration on the building. Colors, uh, the materials, and some of the, the bascery detailing. Neighborhood had no issues with any of the variances that we, that we were seeking. Uh, it was mostly related to the design of the facade. So I'll just start by walking you through the floor plans. Van Vorst Street is to the top of the screen and Sussex Street is to the right. So, um, the building has a large ground floor parking garage. We have eleven parking spaces, uh, plus, um, one of the spaces is an ADA parking space. All of these spaces will be deeded to specific units within the building. There are six total units, so, four of the units will have two parking spaces and then two of the units will have a single parking space. It's also worth mentioning that, um, some of these spaces are tandem spaces. And, um, w- we intend to use the, uh, ADA, uh, aisle as a, a maneuvering space for these, um, the tandem spaces. Along the west side of the property, we have the utility spaces and the, the egress stairs. And then at the corner, um, we have a large lobby right off of the main, the main entrance, which is, which is on Sussex Street. Second and third floor plans are identical, uh, and there's two units per floor. Each of these units are, are large, two thousand-plus square foot apartments with, uh, three bedrooms each. Um, there's a, there's a private elevator in the center of the building and then we have the, the egress stairs, again, on, on the west side of the, of the building. One of the units is, is north-facing here and then the other unit is, uh, south-facing. These units have large, large windows, these are, these are loft-like apartments. And like I said, the, the second and third floor plans are identical. Fourth and the fifth floor of the building are occupied by two units. These top floor units are duplex units. Again, they're oriented facing north and facing south. The, the main entrance to the unit is on the, on the fifth floor. And, um, the lower floor houses, uh, four bedrooms plus a, uh, small den. The units are very similar, uh, the difference being that the unit to the north has a, uh, small, small balcony. The fifth floor is the main, uh, living space for, for the units. So we have a, a large entry foyer, um, as well as a large kitchen and living and dining room. There are also, there's also a den and, uh, an office planned for this level of the apartment. There's also, uh, an interior stair for these units which access, which accesses, uh, private roof decks above. So this is the, uh, roof plan of the building. We have a, at the center of the plan, we have an amenity space along with a, uh, common roof deck for the lower floor units. And then on the north and the south side, we have, uh, private roof decks for the top two duplex apartments. The roof deck is, uh, surrounded by a, a green roof, um, buffer between the, the edge of the deck and the building parapet. This is the, um, sorry, this is incorrectly labeled, this is the Van Vorst Street elevation. This is actually the, the east-facing elevation, uh, which was shown in the, the rendering on the first page. The design is, is very simple. It was inspired by some of the more traditional, uh, buildings found throughout the district as well as some of the industrial buildings that, were common throughout this neighborhood. The building features brick as the primary facade material. As I mentioned previously, we have large oversized aluminum windows and, um, the top floor has, um, decorative, uh, arches, as well as a, a masonry cornice. For the, for the ground floor facade, um, the, this area over here is the, the lobby and the amenity space for the building. And then we're, we're detailing a, uh, decorative metal grill for the, for the parking garage, which gives a little bit more of a decorative look. So a bit more interesting than just having, um, open, open windows here. This, uh, this design is carried around to the south elevation, this is correctly labeled, this is the Sussex Street elevation. Um, this is, again, the design is consistent, um, and we have the, the main entry, um, at the, at the center of the facade, with a, with a large canopy over, over the entrance. This is the west elevation, it's pretty straightforward, this is right up against an approved, uh, building, so, that's right on the property line. So, um, we're just, as a placeholder, we're, we're, uh, indicating stucco for, for this facade. And then finally, this is the north elevation. And, again, we're carrying the, the design of the, of the primary facade around to the, to the sides of the building. So, the, the window detailing, the brick is the facade, primary material, is all consistent across all three exposed elevations. Here we have our, our shadow analysis, um, happy to answer any questions on this. And then, um, finally, we have our, uh, material board, with an enlarged detail of the ground floor garage screening, um, as well as an enlarged detail of the, of the building parapet. And that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Weckman. Any questions, anyone?
Question for you.
Sure.
Uh, when you mentioned the, um, stucco on the side of the building and the building going to the property line, it's, um, it's not up against the building though, is it? I can't see that on the, uh... What's the space between one building to the other that's alongside of it?
They're, they're both right on the lot line.
They're going to be both right on the lot lines?
Correct.
So, is there any space at all, three inches, anything that's right?
Maybe a couple of inches, just, just...
Okay, that's my concern, what's the couple of inches?
Okay.
What is a couple of inches?
Oh, well, right now it's planned to be right on the property line.
Right, right, yes. Yeah, so we're not going to have like a five or six inch space and nobody's going to get there to clean it or do anything in there?
No, correct.
Right, so it's gotta be one foot, that, that's going to get damaged and nobody, it's going to be close, tight together.
That's right.
Okay. The other thing is, I didn't notice what you're doing with the garbage. You were talking about the garage area with the pocket, um... I see the mechanical room, I see the, uh, electrical room. I'm not seeing...
So we have a, we have a...
Next to the bicycle room?
Yeah, a flexible, uh, storage room.
Mine's don't have no note on that, what it is. My drawer doesn't say what that is, it's just an empty room.
Gotcha. Yeah, so we, we have a, a refuse room here for, for things like large boxes and furniture items that may be disposed of. And then we have, on the upper floors, each, each floor has its own, uh, trash room, which will be, um, emptied regularly by building maintenance.
So when we go downstairs, store downstairs, it'll be just taken out of the building?
Right, it'll be brought down from the trash room on each floor out to the curb for pickup.
For pickup? And you have no room downstairs in the basement just in case you get too much garbage upstairs or something's going on?
That's, that's what that, that room on the first floors is for, it's for the, for, um, large bulk...
Room next to the bicycle room?
So, regular trash, you know, every garbage would be kept on the, on, on the individual floor. And then if anybody has a large box or something that can't be stored within the, the trash room on each floor, they can bring it down to that, that room on the, the first floor.
Alright, that's good. Uh, bicycles, how many bicycles on these racks? Only five?
Uh, it's, it's a double height rack.
Oh, it's a double height rack, okay, cool.
Yep.
Okay. And then the next one was the, um, tandem pocket that you mentioned. You said the, um, tandem pocket, they're going to be for the units that are half double, um, pocket spots?
Yeah.
They'll be dedicated to those units that are going to have double pocket spots? Okay, that, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have two questions for you. I didn't hear anything about, uh, mechanical unit screening on the roof?
Sure, let me, uh... We do have, um, a, a screen provided around the, the equipment. But the, the building parapet is also about, uh, four feet high, so it'll, it would be a lot higher than any of the proposed equipment on the roof.
Okay, but then there's screening on the backside of it as well, right? Um, my other question is on the... Let me just get to it here. On the garage screening. We usually look for louvers on garage screening, I, I know this is a little more attractive than a louver. My concern is headlights shining out into the neighborhood. Is there anything here that mitigates that?
One of the things that we talked about was doing a double layer for the screen, so that the, there's an inner layer and an outer layer that's offset, that are offset from each other. So they would, it would block any light or, you know, views into the garage as opposed to just a single, single layer. So that's, that's something that we're considering and we would be agreeable to.
Okay. I thought the ordinance, I could be wrong. Cam, are you handling this?
Yes, yeah, I'm covering for this, yeah.
Garage screening ordinance, does that call out specifically louvers to... I, I think the language says something about shielding, you know, light shining from inside the garage going out?
Yeah, it, it should be doing that, so, uh, if there's anything that is allowing for light to get out, we're going to have to find a way to screen that.
Sure, we, we can submit a, a detail of the design for this.
We'll add that as a condition of approval.
Sure, absolutely.
Alright. Uh, that's it for me, anybody else, any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Weckman.
I do. Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Mr. Height, good evening, your license is current tonight?
Good evening, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Yeah, Charles, would you go through the planning issues on this, uh, application, please?
I, I will, so, just to remind the board, we are in the, uh, Tidewater District Redevelopment Plan. This is the historic buffer district, so we are pulling the zoning bulk requirements from that sub-district of the redevelopment plan. The existing conditions, just to reiterate, this property is occupied by a one-story industrial building. There's not much architecture to it, uh, so what you're seeing today is really, uh, a renovation of that industrial concept into what would be a mixed-use, uh, a, a multi-family development. The specific variances that we're requesting tonight are with respect to the building height, the coverage, uh, and the front yard setback. All really have to relate to, uh, the existing conditions of the building, uh, and what we're trying to envision as a really permitted multi-family use in, 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 on this property. With respect to the building height, uh, these are bulk variances, so there's, uh, building height in feet and stories. What the redevelopment plan permits is, uh, forty-five feet and four stories. Uh, what is being proposed tonight is fifty-one feet and five stories. Um, the issue here is that we are also in a floodplain, so the floodplain elevation is at eleven feet, uh, the finished floor level is at six feet. And, uh, that difference, uh, the Jersey City zoning code allows you to increase the permitted building height to, uh, meet that finished, uh, floodplain elevation, which is approximately additional six feet. So now the permitted height becomes from forty-five to fifty-one. At that point, we're left over with this half-story of space that could be built, uh, but just really an oversized crawl space, if you will, at the ground floor to raise the finished floor elevation above. In this proposal, we're asking the board to increase that ground floor, um, four and a half feet to create that functional ground floor level, so you have the lobby, the parking, the mechanical, um, all that refuse area. Uh, in doing so, you actually have a lot more efficiency on that lowest level that's technically in the floodplain and then the residential floors above. Again, only four residential floors are elevated above the floor, floodplain. So, um, in that essence, um, that's the driving factor, uh, in terms of the design of the, the overall building elevations. There are other taller structures in the neighborhood across the street in a different district in the redevelopment plan. There's a large multi-story mixed-use development, um, along, across Van Vorst. I didn't have a chance to count the stories, but it's upwards of fifteen stories in height. And, in my opinion, in doing that, in the, um, in utilizing the ground floor, it presents a lot of benefits in terms of function, which outweigh the detriments. I would offer that this, this, uh, variance meets that flexible standard. Uh, in terms of the lot coverage and front yard setback, we're both relying on the existing conditions of that industrial structure. First and foremost, the, uh, the lot coverage is permitted to be seventy-five percent based on the zoning standards. Um, what exists today is a hundred percent. We're actually scaling that back to ninety-five percent in the rear, uh, interior corner of this property. It's a corner property, so we have, uh, full frontage or, or zero front setback on both Sussex and Van Vorst. I'll get into that in a minute, but in the rear, we create a little bit of additional space that, then that currently exists. And we carry that through on the upper fours, uh, where there's adjacent windows to provide that light and air. So, the building on the upper stories is set back, but at the ground level, it is proposed to be ninety-five percent, uh, coverage. So again, um, we're trying to respect, um, allowing... to respect allowing for the appropriate massing of the building, consistent zero-foot setbacks on the front facades, and then creating a little bit of space for the interior corner. We do also have a green roof, which helps with stormwater benefits to offset that additional coverage. With respect to the front yard, there, the language is to maintain the existing streetscape. So, essentially, this is a zero front yard setback. It is an outlying property in the fact that it's an industrial building that we're transitioning to be more consistent with the other residential and mixed-use developments in the area. So, we are maintaining zero feet along Sussex and Van Vorst, and that's greater than what the other streets on Sussex are. So, the existing condition is a little bit closer to the sidewalk than the other existing properties on Sussex. So, that creates the front yard setback variance. Again, the streetscapes are gonna be improved. We believe the proposed design of the ground floor and the upper floors with that industrial aesthetics helps further the purpose of the redevelopment plan in terms of the front yard setback and how it's designed. Those are the three variances in detail. I do also think that overall, this application furthers purposes of the land use law and the redevelopment plan. Purpose A, to guide redevelopment. Purpose E, to establish appropriate population densities. This is a permitted density, the six units on this 5,000, roughly 5,000 square foot property. We are also providing improvements along the streetscape and the proposed design of the building to further an environmentally visual interest along the street. That's Purpose I. When we look to the negative criteria, again, it's the balancing test here. We are proposing a multifamily use where currently there's an industrial use. So, that transition, in my opinion, is consistent with the redevelopment plan. I don't think there's any impairment of the redevelopment plan or the master plan, and I'll just quote the historic buffer district to provide development to complement and maintain the historic district's streetscape and pattern of land uses. So, this is predominantly a residential mixed-use neighborhood. We're transitioning industrial to residential. With respect to any substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare, again, the massing of the building, creating light and air in the interior, we are reutilizing existing curb cut. That's why we're providing the off-street parking for the units, so that does exist. And in terms of any impact from the coverage, we are also providing that stormwater management in terms of offsetting that impact. That's what I had for direct presentation tonight. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hight. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hight. So, is that single-story, windowless, yellow brick monstrosity still there or hasn't been raised?
It's still there of 3:30 today when I did my site visit, yes.
Right, and is there, you mentioned it's industrial use. Are there any cleanup issues that are associated with it?
I have not gotten any information on that. I would imagine if there were, they would have to go through any proper channels. So, the remediation of the site would have to happen to allow for the development.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead.
Just since you brought up the numbers on the height variance, they're allowing you to raise it up six feet because of the floodrim, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm on now, thank you. I can tell. I should keep my glasses on, that'd help. Then you said it's gonna be six feet, so there's a four-foot difference, where I asked for the extra floor to have feet. The four-foot difference, is that still in the floodrim though? Is there like, are we still at flood level of four feet? So, if there was a flood, the cars that are parked there, the lobby area, have a chance of being in a four-foot floodrim?
Correct. It's, so the finished floor is with respect to the residential habitable space. So, that occurs at the second story of the proposed, and that's elevated above the floodplain. That ground floor would still technically be within the floodplain.
Would be on the floodplain. So, electrical room, mechanical room, are we, is there anything that you're foreseeing to protect those areas from being in that flood range? Because now you're, they're all in a flood range area, right?
And we're getting a little bit more into mechanical design. From my knowledge, that additional variance relief we're requesting helps us to allow for space to mount that equipment above that six-foot.
Above that four-foot, so you'll be higher than the four-foot?
That's my understanding of the design of it. I would defer back to the project architect if we even have gotten to mounting the mechanical design of it, because usually we're not at that point.
I mean, the people that are gonna be parking their cars there are gonna need to know that they're in a flood area, right?
Yep.
So, that's up to them. They decide to buy it or whatever, that's up to them. But now when you talk about electrical as safety to the building, I think those numbers should have been figured out before we had this conversation. That would have been a lot helpful.
So, I don't know if Mr. Weckerman wants to address if we even got, have gotten to that point. A lot of times, the HVAC equipment and system isn't designed when we're at this point.
More worried about the electrical panels coming into the room, how big they are, how, you know, how far off the floor they are. My experience, sometimes they're not that high up, you know? They're not, they're definitely never more than four-foot high.
Yeah, it's obviously a concern with all of our projects that are located within the floodplain. So, the plan for this building is to use a combination of dry and wet floodproofing techniques. So, for rooms like the, so the facade will be provided with flood vents along the parking garage to deal with the floodwaters. The more sensitive mechanical rooms, it's really just the electrical room on the ground floor. We plan on using a dry floodproofing technique, so watertight door, and then waterproofing around the electrical room to help prevent flooding of those specific spaces.
Okay.
So, the electrical room, the sprinkler room.
Okay. So, okay, yeah, I understand that. That works, as long as they work, you know, as long as they... I've seen other, I'm in the construction site.
Yeah.
I see them go either way, you know, so...
They don't leave the door open.
I'll take that off the record. So, the concern, then my concern is, so as we, as, I'll speak for myself, okay? As I approve this to go forward, we're stating that the building's gonna have an issue with a flood, being in a flood area. The other buildings, the existing building there right now is coming down.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not gonna go any more than that. All right, thank you very much for asking the question.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ed. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hight.
I have to finish this, so I hope it's public.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Hi. I do. Sure, it's Diane Case, last name spelled K-A-E-S-E, 192 Washington Street, Jersey City.
Ms. Case, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Yes. First of all, I want to say thank you to the applicant and that we did appreciate the extra time that they gave us to work with them, to help bring this application into a more appropriate design. We look forward to actually continuing a little bit of that, because this is one where the devil's really in the details. And the more definition we can get on this building, the less blocky it will look. And I think we've gone, we've taken considerable steps in that direction, and I think maybe a couple more steps and we will have exactly what's gonna work. But, the one thing I did want to bring up was something that you all brought up, which was the screening. And the screening's on the first floor level, it's not at upper levels. So, it's not a huge concern to the neighborhood. Obviously, ceiling lights would be more of a concern because they have a tendency to stay on. If the ceiling lights are put on timers or motion detectors, that helps. The other thing is that we would love to see some kind of artistic screening, because it's right at the street level, we're walking past it on a regular basis. So, having a series of louvers is not exactly something that we'd be interested in as a neighborhood. So, like I said, we hope to continue a collaboration with this project team. We've had some really, really good meetings, we've had some really good back and forth, and we are happy with where the design is right now, and we look forward to continue to fine-tuning it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Case. And Mr. Weckerman and counsel, maybe I wasn't clear about the screening. If it was a louver system, it would be inside any kind of decorative screening. I think the screening that's there is more than sufficient as far as the looks go, but I'd rather have louvers on the inside to block light coming out.
I understand. So, this could be something, there could be decorative screening outside, but inside the louvers?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, we can...
I think that's what you talked about, right, Mr. Weckerman?
Yeah, I will submit a detail to planning.
Okay.
And that's a condition, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody else here from the public that wants to comment?
Seeing the public, Mr. Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, anything you want to add?
Yes, okay, so, we're going to just reorganize the staff conditions real quick. So, in the staff memo provided online dated July 9th, we can omit the first condition, which was to revise the drawings so that they incorporated the historic buffer architectural elements. So, that's been done. So, we can omit that. And then we're going to add a 10th condition for the garage louver and screening, which we've put on the record tonight. Are those conditions acceptable to the applicant?
They're acceptable, and the 10th condition is also acceptable.
Okay, thank you. And then...
Just for the record, if you're removing one and adding one, it'll be the ninth?
Yes, that would...
It'll be a 10th, unless it's sort of left open.
Agreed.
We want to put closure for Mr. O'Donnell.
Agreed, yes. I didn't want confusion about the existing ninth condition, though, or wanted to go into the details of shifting numbers down. But, true, we would have nine conditions in total. So, thank you. Now, I would just put on the record that planning staff agrees with the professional planner testimony given regarding the variances. We do agree that they meet the C1 and C2 standards for permitting a variance in this zone, and planning staff finds that the variances will not have any detriment to the zone plan or the master plan, and they can be permitted without having any adverse impact to the public's general health, welfare, well-being. And beyond that, planning staff finds that this will be a welcomed addition to the neighborhood, and it's an attractive building in the historic buffer, and planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P.2023-0039 with, as presented to our board tonight, with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, on a motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I want to thank the applicant for working with the community. Ms. Case is very active in that community, and we're very happy that she's there to help us. So, thank you for helping. And I like the result, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Um, it's a variance, in my opinion, it's a variance request.
Councilwoman Prinsery?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Just one of the conditions, that of the safety of the building and the welfare of the people in the building, just the consideration of the mechanical rooms that they are being protected as, in that area. And the rest of the variance, I see that's, they fit the building very fine in that area, familiar with the neighborhood. And thanks for working out with the community. It's very important. With that, I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Yeah, I know how meticulous Diane can be and diligent, so I commend you, counsel, for working with the community and getting it to a point of excellence, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Zai?
Yeah, the only thing I like about is the parking. You have enough parking for people, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree with Cam's testimony as well as Mr. Hight's. I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan or the master plan when it comes to the deviations requested, and my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for their cooperation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, everybody. It's 6:50. We'll be back at 7 o'clock.
Four properties into one, and build a new eight-story, 53-unit building with 31 parking spaces. Just to quickly give you the unit breakdown, there are 15 studios that average 432 square feet, 18 one-bedroom apartments that average 568, 16 two-bedrooms that average 1,043 square feet, and then four three-bedroom apartments that average 1,186 square feet. Here, we're showing the rendering of the building. I do want to show the site plan and walk through a few quick things. So, I want to start with the street. The existing properties do each have a curb cut, so there are four existing curb cuts. We'll be removing them, building a new curb with only one 10-foot curb cut. We're also providing new sidewalks and one new street tree to have two trees total. The building itself is built to the rear property line and built to both side property lines, with the exception of this five-foot alley on the left. And that alley is there to respect the windows on the three-story building to the left there. The front setback is just about six feet, and that was chosen to match, again, that building to the left. It's the exact same front setback as the building to the left. And we are using the space in front of the building basically for planters as much as we can. And the other thing, site plan that I do want to note, is we do have a stormwater retention system. It's located on the, in the cellar level. All of the building leaders go there first. So, and as Tom mentioned, the engineer's here if you did want to discuss that. With that, I'm gonna just move on to the architecturals. And this is, I'm gonna start here on the cellar plan. So, the cellar, we have a sprinkler room at the bottom left. Just so you know, Liberty Avenue is at the bottom of the drawings. So, the sprinkler room here is just at the front of the building off Liberty Avenue, so this will be a fully sprinkled building. The front here actually is our stormwater detention tank. And then we do have a room with some storage lockers that will be rentable to tenants. Then besides that, the rest of this floor is basically parking. It's accessed from this ramp that goes up to the first floor, and I do just want to deal with both floors together as far as the parking, so I'm gonna move on to the first floor. So, we have the single access for in and out right here on the left with the two-way drive aisle, which again wraps around and then down, and that's where that ramp is, that goes down to the cellar level. So, in total, both of these floors together have 31 parking spaces, five of which have EV chargers, 48 bicycle parking spaces, so almost one per unit, and then actually seven motorcycle parking spaces and some of the extra space. Okay, so, staying here on the first floor, we spoke about the parking space. I do want to get into the residential. The main entry is on the right side of this drawing, which is closer to St. Paul Avenue. We have a large residential lobby, which gives us access to the stair, to the parking area, and to two elevators. Also, we do have an amenity space on this floor located in the back. It is a total of 516 square feet, and it also has its own ADA bath attached to it. On the left side of the building, we do have that five-foot alley that I mentioned, and off of that alley, we have our second stair, and we have our trash room. The building has a trash chute, which leads directly to this room. There's a compactor in the room, and there's direct access to that side alley to bring everything out to the street. Moving on to the second floor, this floor is entirely residential, and we did increase the setbacks on this floor. So, each of the side yards are now set five feet in, and the rear yard is now 30 feet. The front did not change, however, we do have two small cantilevers in the front. So, what we have on this floor are eight apartments in total, and it's a mix of studios, which are shown in blue, one bedrooms, which are the gray, two bedrooms, which are the green, and three bedrooms, which are brown. So, all of the apartments in the building, including these, are ADA adaptable. They all have washer dryer in the unit, and we're using... and we're using electric heat pumps with wall-mounted mini splits for heat and air conditioning. On this floor, we do have that roof section on the first floor that we're going to use for private roof decks. So the back five apartments will each have their own private roof deck. As well as that, we're going to have 1,156 square feet of green roof trays on this second floor. This is a plan for the third, fourth, and fifth floors. There's also eight apartments on this floor, however, the mix is a little different. There are three studios, two one-bedroom apartments, and three two-bedroom apartments. So there are no three bedrooms on these floors. Then this plan is showing the sixth, seventh, and eighth floor. Here, we only have seven apartments per floor, so they're a little bigger. It's one studio, three one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and there's a three-bedroom on each of these floors as well. Then lastly, for the floor plans, we do have a roof deck on the building. It's served by both elevators and stairs, and we have an elevator lobby between them here. It's a common roof deck, it is set back 10 feet from the front of the building. We're using that space for green roof trays, there's a total of 1,258 square feet of green roof trays on this floor. We also have a large section of HVAC condensers, and we have an emergency backup generator for the elevator. Here, we're looking at the front elevation to the building. And here, we are looking to create a building with some depth and interest by using some small cantilevers in the front, as well as a variety of different building materials and colors. So our main building material is brick, and we are doing that in two different colors. One side is a simple dark gray brick, it's a black diamond velour. And the other side is a mix of three different blends, excuse me, it's a three-brick blend that we're showing here on the right of the drawing. This brick is accented at the base with a cast stone base, as well as a cast stone band above the first floor. The second major material we have here are fiber cement panels, and we're using those in three different colors, actually. So there's a charcoal-colored panel that are located in between the windows vertically. And then there are two on the main sections that are fiber cement panels. The lower levels have a light mist-colored panel, and then at the top, we have arctic white panels. And then you can see the stair bulkheads that are beyond, and those will also be arctic white, however, those are fiber cement siding. Lastly, working our way back down, all of the windows and doors on the building, at the front at least, are a black aluminum frame. We also have a black aluminum-wrapped canopy above the main entrance here on the right. And lastly, here, the garage door is a black steel roll-up garage door. This is the right-side elevation, the ground floor is on the property line, and everything else is set back five feet. So on the ground floor, we're going to have a dark gray smooth stucco finish. And then everything above is going to be fiber cement siding, again, the two colors with the light mist color at the lower levels and the arctic white at the top. And lastly, we do have a five-foot brick return around the side elevation here. Now, we're looking at the left side, so here's where that alley is. So this is on the property line, and again, will be finished with a smooth stucco finish painted dark gray. And again, the same two-color fiber cement siding, and that same five-foot brick return. The main difference here is we do have the alley, so we have the side door for the stair, and we have, again, a black steel roll-up door for the garage area, so we can have direct garage, I'm sorry, for the trash area, so we can have direct out from the trash. And then lastly, here, we have our rear elevation, which is again the same story, where we have a smooth stucco finish on the ground floor, and then the two colors of fiber cement siding above. That would conclude the architectural presentation. I could answer questions now or after, whichever you prefer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I just have just a couple minor questions. The screening for the condenser units, is it the wood slat screening, or is it the aluminum equipment screen that's listed right there?
Um, oof, let me check for you.
Oof.
That's a question I wasn't ready for. I believe it's the wood slats that we're showing here on the right. Yes, it's the wood slat fence.
Okay, and the aluminum is for, what, the stair tower?
Oh, the aluminum is for the, yeah, it's on the stair tower, and it's for the generator.
Okay. And then, my other question, while you're on the generator, that's shock-mounted as well?
I believe it has to be.
Okay. And then my last question, comment, I could ask it now, I could ask it later, but I just want to make sure, and we'll add this as a condition of approval, that the affordable units are constructed with the same fit and finish as the rest of the building. There's no discernible difference between those from the market rate units in the building.
That is 100% true.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, anybody else?
Chair, I just have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead. Do we, Cam, do we have a staff memo on this?
So, Juroh couldn't be with us tonight, unfortunately, and we were just going to read into the conditions into the record.
So, yes, the answer is yes, there is a staff report, we have it.
Okay.
And agree to all the conditions in it, yes?
Yes, we have a staff report, and I believe it was online.
There's nothing online. Could be mistaken. We could print it and then bring it back. Yeah.
No. Just the staff recommended conditions, which were...
Yeah, this might be the situation where the applicant saw it, but we maybe didn't toggle it to available for the general public on the public-facing website. This is, this just comes down to maybe being still new to the system. But we did disseminate it to the applicant. We'll leave it with the board with what they want to do.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to penalize the applicant because it's not up there, but, you know, we do need to, we need to do better on those, we need to get those up. We had a rule in the past where it had to be up by the Friday, close of business before the meeting, all staff reports, so let's try and get back to that if we can, all right, guys?
Understood, yeah, I'll double-check to see the time that we uploaded it. And if that's of concern as well, I'll talk to Juroh about that. Certainly make sure that she needs to know the difference between one that's internally
Sure.
available versus publicly available.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Anything else, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to have Lee Klein come up and just address the memo we received from transportation.
I do. Lee, middle initial D, is in Daniel, Klein, K-L-E-I-N. My license is current and in good standing, and I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer, and that certification is also in good standing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and I forget what your voice sounds like sometimes. It's nice to have you actually come up and testify.
Said that last time.
I know. I'm floored when you come up, I love it.
So I'm looking at the August 5th, 2024, report from the Department of Infrastructure, Division of Transportation Planning, and there are four comments, I'll just go through them quickly. One of the comments is the accessibility of a handicapped person through the garage. We have a series of bollards that are protecting some interior walls there, and I believe the spacing between those bollards is at least three feet, so handicap accessibility should be through those bollards. Number two is a parking garage space number 18, it's in the corner on the...
Counsel, can we show the parking level, yeah, on there?
Basement level?
Yeah, and then...
Just hit the right button.
Yeah, good. So the one on the upper right-hand corner is space number 18. It's an eight-point, or an eight-foot, eight-foot, three-inch wide space. It's marked as compact, and so is number 17 next to it. In a situation like that, a vehicle can pull in headfirst and still open up their driver's side door without hitting the wall. If a passenger was in the car, they'd have to be let out first before they park. Loading, so, the comment is about this being a dead-end street, and they're recommending a horseshoe driveway. But in the situation on Liberty, at the end of Liberty, on the left-hand side, the west side is a hydrant, and on the east side, there's a series of driveways. So basically, the end is not parked. So a truck, if they had to, if they're doing it today, would come down, do a K-turn, and then exit. And then the last comment is about the electric vehicle stations, and I think we've got five, but I think we need to move one of them to the handicap spot, because at least one needs to be a handicap EV charging spot. So we've got five, it's like one, two, and three on one level, or one and two on one level, three, four, two, three, four on the basement, so we'll move one of them over to the EV, then we'll meet the state statute.
You don't have to increase the size of the spot for the charger?
No, it's a post-mounted, you know, like if this is the spot, it's post-mounted up in the front, there's a head to charge my car, and then usually if there's a car next to it, so they're double-headed.
Okay, understood. That's it, anything else?
That's it for that.
Any questions, anyone?
Yeah, I have a question. How many bike parkings you have?
I believe we have 48 bike parking spaces. 24 on one level, and 24 in the basement, and 24 on the first level, yes.
And do you allow e-bikes to be parked there?
That, I'm going to leave, I mean, I haven't been here since I've heard that question.
I think the type of bike racks that we have would probably not be able to hold one of the e-bikes, because they're larger, yeah, the racks are for standard. You know, obviously, we can put into the lease as a policy that we wouldn't allow that in there, but, you know, that's hard to police.
You will make people sign that they won't park e-bikes there?
That would be something we could put in the lease as a restriction, yes.
Yeah, because of the fire.
Yeah, I know, it's a problem throughout the city, I know. So, yes, that's a standard lease condition, at least in the ones that I've reviewed these days, is to make sure that people don't put the e-bikes in, but again, it's a difficult thing to...
Because this area where you have the building, so many people have bikes over there, they use even e-bikes and everything, and probably you won't know they're parking in there, so you'll have to get it signed in the lease.
Yeah, we can add that as a condition of approval, if you would like.
Yeah, I think that's probably where we should head with it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Anything else, anybody? All right, thank you, Mr. Klein, we appreciate it.
And finally, I'm just going to have Sam Bellamy come up and quickly confirm that there are no variances for this project.
Yes, I do. Sure, Samuel Bellamy, last name B-E-L-L-A-M-Y.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening, your license is current tonight?
Evening, yes, it's current and in good standing.
Is this going to be the easiest money you ever made?
Hopefully.
I love it, I love it.
I'm here later on tonight, so...
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So, yeah, this property is located in the R3 district, it's a conforming multifamily use. As Mr. Lean said, the affordable housing overlay replaces the traditional density standard with one based on bulk, and the bulk of the building is conforming. So overall, this is directly in line with what the zoning calls for, and is completely conforming.
All right, thank you, any questions, anybody? Nice, very nice work. All right, counsel, anything else?
The only thing I would add is that we did meet with the condo board for 75 Liberty across the street. We met with about 15 people from the condominium, just to walk them through the proposal. There was not any serious complaints about the project. We did say that we would continue to meet with them to discuss construction, because obviously, it's a dead-end street, so there was concern about construction and being able to navigate the street.
Sure.
And with that, I did review the memo from planning, and we do agree to the conditions therein, along with the condition regarding the finishes in the affordable unit, replacing one of the ADA spaces as an EV space, and a requirement in the lease that no e-bikes are allowed in the bike area.
Excellent, okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, I see no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, you want to add anything?
All right, so, I don't know how you want to handle this, Chair, but would you want to mark into evidence one copy of the staff memo? Or would you rather just read into the record the conditions?
I think if you explain anything of relevance in the memo, that's sufficient for the board's purpose, and then any of the conditions, obviously, you can articulate.
Okay. So, I suppose actually, since Tom's actually mentioned the memo already, maybe we should just mark it into evidence.
Okay.
It's just so we have a record.
It's called A2.
Thanks, Matt. So, thank you for agreeing to those conditions in the staff memo. Planning staff agrees with the professional planner testimony. This application does not have any variances. And this application does meet the purpose of the affordable housing overlay. So, planning staff is satisfied with the purpose of this application, and the design will not have any detriment to the zone plan or the public's general health, welfare, or well-being. And planning staff recommends approval with the conditions stated in the planning staff memo.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2023-0071, with conditions listed as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval. Okay, on a motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
I'm happy to see that there are some affordable housing units in this building, aye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prinsery?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipskin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Let's call item 14, is case P 23-083, is a preliminary and final major subdivision with variances for 206 Van Vor Street. And counsel, do you want to call the next one concurrently?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll also call item 15, is case P 23-084, is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for 206 Van Vor Street.
Okay, now, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, and I do have the original public notices that were sent for the respective applications. We did provide separate notices for the subdivision and for the site plan, and I have them here.
Chairman, I received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to both the subdivision and subsequent site plan application. For purposes of the record, while we're going to hear the presentation together, we're going to mark the notice for case P 23-083, which is the subdivision application, as A1. And we are going to mark the notice for case P 23-084 as A1, little a. Who appear to be in order, and we can mark those accordingly.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So we have here before you tonight are the two applications. The one is request for preliminary and final major subdivision. And then the second application is for a site plan approval for the remainder lots, for five two-family homes, and then one lot will be used as a play area for a daycare that is, will be occupying the adjacent building. So this, right now, it's an existing corner lot, around 15, not around, it's 15,000 square feet. If you're familiar with the Pauls Hook area, and this area by, it's close to the St. Peter's Prep practice field, and it's commonly referred to as the Belle Fuse Building down there. It's a very old, old building, and the portion that's part of the site plan before you tonight is the parking lot area. So the purpose of the subdivision is to subdivide out the existing Belle Fuse Building as one lot, and then create six additional lots that front the Long River Street. And that's where we would create the five townhouses and the play area to... And that's where we would create the five townhouses and, and the, the play area, uh, to, um, to be associated with the daycare that will be in the, in the Belle Fuse Building. Um, now, the property is a little kinda unique, too, in that it's, it's located within the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan area, um, and it's within the historic buffer district. But there's also a small sliver that is located in the, uh, Pauls Hook Historic District. Uh, and I, I point that out because we were required to go to the Historic Preservation Commission to have the subdivision reviewed, uh, and, and, uh, receive, uh, approval on that. And there were some, uh, changes and work that we were, were proposed to do to the Belle Fuse Building as part of this site plan application, and that, that was approved, and we received a certificate, uh, of appropriateness, uh, a few months ago. So, uh, you'll see the, the, uh, the variances we're requesting, uh, with regard to the subdivision are related to the minimum lot size, sizes of the respective lots for the townhomes. Uh, and then there, the other ones are related to the existing Belle Fuse Building, which are existing conditions, and we cannot change. Then you'll see the, the, uh, variances we're requesting with regard to the, the site plan and the townhomes are really related to the, the undersized nature of the lots, and specifically, the, the depth of the lots. You'll, the lots, um, are broken into a twenty-five-foot-wide corner lot, and then the remainder, five or twenty feet wide. So you have, you know, a good substantial width on the lots, and although it's not in the historic district, the, the, the minimum lot size for the historic district is eighteen feet wide. Um, but because of the Belle Fuse Building, we can't go any, uh, any further, um, back. Um, they're about sixty to sixty-five feet deep. Um, so that, that's gonna generate a lot of the requested variances we're seeking. We're also seeking a, a request for relief from the parking. Uh, the, the current plan would require a minimum of one unit per, one parking space per unit and a maximum of two. Uh, we're not providing, uh, for any parking, uh, in the townhouses. Again, we're, our, our thought is to have kind of a townhouse style similar to the historic districts. Uh, as, as noted, that this is in the historic buffer district in the Tidewater Basin Plan. So directly to the east are, are actually one and two family homes. Uh, you have larger buildings, uh, to the south and to the west. Um, but our thought is, similar to historic district, uh, townhouses, parking is not permitted on, on developments less than ten units. So we think that's, that's an appropriate, um, development option here. So we, um, we have the HPC approval, we have, you know, I see, you know, Ms. Case is here. We did meet with her and, and some of the neighbors with regard to this and, and, and some other issues related to it. I'll, I'll let Ms. Case, you know, speak for herself, um, on, on her, her opinions. But, uh, we think it's a, it's a, it's a good project that's gonna fill up, uh, a surface parking lot, which, you know, you don't, you don't want surface parking lots. And, um, it's an appropriate use. So with that said, I, I have, um, three witnesses tonight. I'm gonna bring up, uh, my engineer, Mr. Raymond. He's just gonna walk you through the, the site and point out how the, the subdivision breaks out. Uh, then Nicole Robertson is our architect, and she'll walk you through the proposed, uh, uh, units and the architecture. And then Gabe Baller is our, our planner, that'll, um, walk you through the, the respective requests for the variances. And that being said, I'm gonna bring up Mr. Raymond.
Hi. Sure.
Oh, gosh, I did this last time.
Edwin, last name Reimon, R-E-I-M-O-N, licensed engineer in New Jersey, office at Eleven Park Avenue in Rodford, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, sir, and, uh, that license is current tonight.
It is.
Okay, thanks, you're qualified.
You're welcome. Okay, Chuck, go ahead.
Okay, so Mr. Raymond, if you could give the board the benefit of your knowledge of the site and walk them through the proposed subdivision and the respective lots.
Okay, so what we have on the screen right now is the subdivision plot. Uh, we have the, as you mentioned, the whole entire property, and then it's gonna be subdivided into the, the portion that you see in gray on the top, and then the, the bottom part of, of that drawing, you're gonna see five rectangles, and then one blank space next to it. So you have six lots that are gonna be the subdivision that we're gonna be talking about here today. And those are lot numbers, can you zoom in, please? All right, so we have number thirty-point-zero-one, which is gonna be the playground. Thirty-point-zero-two through thirty-point-zero-six, which are gonna be the townhomes. All these lots are gonna be, uh, twenty-foot wide, except the one at the corner of Morris and Van Borst, and that is gonna be twenty-five feet wide. Uh, the lot on the right-hand side, which is gonna be the playground, is gonna have a, a funky shape on the top. It's gonna have ten, ten-point-five feet, then one-point-five, then again, turn it to the right, uh, to complete the twenty feet. That is the actual subdivision plot that we're gonna be discussing tonight. The next drawing is gonna be the... Okay, so the next drawing is the existing condition plans. Go back. So as Chuck mentioned also, the existing condition plans is basically a parking lot. It's more than ninety percent impervious, and this is gonna be removed to put the new building. The total square footage of this lot is eight thousand eighty-four square feet. By the rules of a Jersey City Municipal Code for Stonewater Management, this qualifies as a minor development. And to that effect, we are gonna provide a blue roof for the construction of this project. Uh, the blue roof is gonna reduce the peak flows as required, uh, we're gonna talk about that later.
So blue roof or a green roof?
I'm, I'm sorry. A green roof.
Yes.
Apologies for that. Uh, the site plan that we see here is, um, the second drawing. Like that, yeah. You're gonna see here on the right-hand side, which is lot thirty-point-zero-one, that is gonna be the playground, where we have a small grass area, and the rest of our lot is gonna be impervious. The lots to the left are all the residential new townhomes, and they're gonna have a setback from the property line, where you're gonna see the steps going up, and also a, a landscaping area. Why do we have these steps? Uh, it's because we are in the floodplain, and we are elevating the entrance of the buildings to elevation eleven. The AE elevation on the zone is nine, so we are two feet above the floodplain elevation. There is nothing below the eleven-point-zero elevation that we have for this building. So all the utilities are on elevation eleven or above. On this plan, you can also see three street trees. On the side of Morris Street, you're gonna see one proposed tree on the side on Van Borst Street. There are two existing trees that are gonna remain on Van Borst Street, and there is one street tree that is gonna remain on Morris Street. In addition to that, we are not gonna impact the intersection of Morris and Van Borst, because there is a raised, uh, uh, pavement at that intersection that is called Traffic Calming, and that is, uh, for pedestrian use. So that area is not gonna be part of a scope of world for the project. So as you can see, the area that is crosshatched on the right-hand side, where you see the, the gray color on Morris Street, that's where we begin the new sidewalk. And then on the street, we're gonna do full-depth pavement, for all the utilities are gonna be underground. The same thing is gonna happen on Van Borst Street. We're gonna do, uh, milling and paving from the end of a raised intersection all the way to the limit of the project, which is the property line. Moving to the next drawing. This one here? Okay, moving to the next drawing, we have the utility plan. On this utility plan, you're gonna see a lot of lines, because we have all these townhomes, we have to provide by, by code, utility service to each of these townhomes. One of the comments from the Jersey City MUA was that we're gonna have a lot of cuts on the water line that is fronting Morris Street. That's where we're gonna provide most of the connections on the proposed utilities. So the Jersey City MUA recommended to replace the whole entire section of water main along Morris. So that's what you see on the drawing, at the very bottom. When you look at the where my pointer is, the heavy line, that means that is a replacement of a water line. And you see, like, five small black dots in there, those are the water valves. So we have the connections from the water main on the street to all the laterals that are coming into the building. The same thing happened to gas, electric, that is coming from a pole on the right-hand side. Uh, the sewer connections are also connected right there on Morris Street. And then, for the unit that is on the left-hand side, we have all the connections on Van Borst Street. Uh, moving forward to the next drawing. This is the lighting plan. The lighting plan was also reviewed by the engineering office. Uh, no comments, we meet the requirements as far as the pollution of lights. We have less than zero-point-three encroaching the, the side property lines on the back. In addition to that, I would like to point out that there is a street lighting on, on these two streets also, uh, on Morris and Van Borst. And also, there is actually one, uh, new type of streetscape lighting on, on Van Borst Street, almost at the intersection. And this is... I don't know if the board, if the members would like to, uh, hear about the Stonewater Management. I find it kind of interesting, the type of system that we have, but looking at the faces, I don't think that you're gonna hear about it.
Is it, yeah, is it different than any other storm?
It is a little bit different.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what we have is that, for the last, uh... Let me say first, we had to revise a Stonewater Management report because of this new layout that we have on the subdivision. We have the lot at the corner. What we did is that we didn't take advantage of the green space that we have on the right-hand side. We brought in a company that is based in Maryland, that is really into, uh, green and blue roof, and we brought in a new type of blue, green roof that we're gonna provide for this project, which has almost twice the capacity of water storage than the one that we've been using in the last three or four years. So that being said, without even looking at the green space that we have on the lot at the corner, we were able to achieve the minimum requirement by the Jersey City, um, uh, Jersey City standards for a stormwater for minor development, which is zero-point-six gallon per square foot of impervious surface. So we have six-hundred-thirty-six cubic feet of water on this green roof, whereas we need only six-point-six-hundred-two. So we are over thirty cubic feet of water above what is required on this green roof. And we are not even going to the lot that is at the corner.
So how, or...
Tell us about...
Yeah, tell about, tell us about the, the increase. Where did the increase come from?
The increase come from, from what is called the capacity of the media that you have for the green roof. So they were able to combine, uh, uh, different sizes of materials and the vegetation that they're using, because that's very important, too, the type of vegetation that you use in the green roof, and the media that you use. So we have a six inches of media that is slightly different than the media that is typically used. They have been looking into that for years, I guess, and they were able to get the volume of detention within that green roof, with a specific type of vegetation, right? So the vegetation in combination with the CIF, and the CIF analysis is that, you know, the part, the size of the particles, the type of, of, of material that you use, all that together, that's what gives you this high detention in the green roof.
Interesting.
Is this some kind of patent on this particular...
I... I don't think I have it with me, but I, I can, next time that I come, I can bring it in, actually, and show it to you. But the patent, I don't think that is being... Uh, no, this is, this is the first one that we did, we changed that. Yeah. It's Green Technologies, that's what it's called. So they don't have a patent, as of now, as far as I know. But they... Well, it's, I found, like I found it in the internet, anybody can find it. I called them, and I spoke to the owner, and I did a Zoom meeting with him. I explained to him what we do here in New Jersey, the rules that we have for Stonewater Management, and the guy was like jumping on the chair, so happy, when I told him the things that I wanted to do. And he said, Edwin, if you want me to come to the meetings, I can come.
So you find, you find this one, compared to what we've been using for the last three years, absorb a doubled amount of water, what is the weight to the structure, the roof, or any of that has to change?
That's very, that is very good. Yeah, what happened also is that, you see, there is something called the wilting point of the media, which is at one, any percent of moist, below the wilting point, the vegetation dies. So the capacities from that wilting point to the saturation of the media, all right? What they have been able to do is plant or get a vegetation type in combination with the soil, the mix that they have, to give you that detention in that media higher than what is typically done.
Okay.
Which is very interesting.
Okay, yeah.
Let's say, if I use zero-point-three minus wilting point zero-point-zero-one-seven, now I'm using zero-point-five minus zero-point-zero-one-seven. So it's, it's a substantial increase in detention that you have, you see?
And to your enthusiasm, it looks like this is a, um...
Oh, I, I love it.
Economical, too, right? It's like, it's, it's almost...
Well, the point that you were making is the weight. You see, this is what happened now. They have different sizes, six inches, eight inches, ten inches, intensive and extensive, because remember, DEP has two different types of green roof, intensive and extensive. So in the extensive green roof, you are at six inches, and those six inches are giving you more capacity, but the weight for the structural engineer, when I start designing the trusses on the roof, that's what really matters. We are at seventy pounds a square foot, versus some of the other models that we had, we were talking about over eighty-five pounds a square foot. So it's a fifteen pounds a square foot difference in load.
Very nice. Glad you made that phone call.
I'm sure we'll be having this discussion with planning.
So in all seriousness, Mr. Harrington, I think obviously in an urban setting like the one that we have here, this could be the type of a product that could really benefit the entire city. And have you seen it? Have you actually seen it in application anywhere?
He invited me already to come because he has like, the way he works, he's like me, he's a consultant to all these companies that provide for him, that provides what he has come up with. So I can...
Haven't seen it in application yet.
I haven't, I have seen the brochures and the picture, because he showed me pictures of the green roof.
Haven't seen it in the field.
But I haven't been in the field yet.
Okay.
That's what it is.
And you're going to go see it in the field, I assume?
Oh, yes. Are you kidding me?
Kidding? Does...
I have to go there.
So Mr. Harrington, if we could provide planning with this information, I think it would be very helpful, because if this gentleman is giving us accurate information, I think we're going to be looking for these green roofs in the future.
Oh, there's stormwater reporting here already.
Absolutely, we'll share that information with planning. Yeah.
That's the one that says revised August 2... Yes, August 24, yeah.
Okay.
All right. We're going to call it here? All right.
Field trip. Field trip. Any other questions for Mr. Raymond?
I don't think so. Anybody? Any questions?
I know.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Can I take it out?
No.
This is yours?
Yes.
Where is mine?
I don't know.
And just for the record, where I believe all the sheets we're showing you on the overhead are contained within the package we submitted to Tyler and to the board, but I'd ask that they be marked as A2. Are we up to?
A2.
Okay. And also...
Thirty-five slides.
The engineering and architectural slides.
Thirty-five.
Thirty, is it thirty?
Thirty-five.
Yes.
Thirty-five, yes.
Thank you, Councilor. And just before Ms. Robertson begins, I just want to let the board know for context, you heard the application earlier for 215 Van Vors? This is catty corner to it. It's about 200 feet away on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Now...
Hi.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, this is my... Tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Nicole, N-I-C-O-L-E, Robertson, R-O-B-E-R-T-S-O-N.
No, no more.
Ms. Robertson, good evening. We've qualified you before. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Okay, so we just prepared a slide presentation, which is a little bit of a condensed, highlighted version of the drawings. The drawings go into a lot more detail, but these are basically excerpts from, or they are excerpts from the drawings. So we've talked about the location of the site. I won't spend a lot of time on this. Chuck covered this, and Chuck and Edwin covered this thoroughly to discuss the fact that we're in the Tidewater Basin redevelopment, we're in the historic buffer zone. So we are a kind of buffer between the Paulus Hook Historic District and the larger buildings that are part of the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan. These images just show the existing conditions, the Belfuse Building and the way that the subdivided, the proposed subdivision to the lots is organized in the perspective view. And then you can see the existing Belfuse Building, which is a historic structure. We did get approval from Historic to modify the building in order to accommodate the proposed structure on the, what is currently a parking lot at the corner. Just kind of move through this quickly. Our zoning tabulation chart highlights in yellow the variances that we're seeking, which Mr. Harrington explained in detail, really come from the fact that, you know, the rear of the site is kind of defined by the existing Belfuse Building, which is a historic structure. And it leaves us with a limited depth to work with. But the width of each of the proposed lots is really consistent with what we see in the Historic District, the corner lot 25 feet wide, and then the remaining five lots being 20 feet wide each. So of course, the minimum lot size is one of the proposed variances in the subdivision, highlighted in yellow there. And then the others that we're discussing are the front yard setback, which I'll show in our site plan, that actually we do comply at the corner with a five-foot minimum rear yard setback requirement. But because the site is not a perfect rectangle, there's actually a kind of taper. So the front yard setback tapers down to four foot six. So it starts off at five feet at the corner and then tapers. And because of the very limited depth of the site, we really didn't want to lose even a few inches to work with, with the living space. And then the maximum lot coverage also is, well, currently it's 100% lot coverage. We're proposing, you know, it's less than 100, it's around 99%. But you'll see that much of it is permeable pavers. So those are counted as, I guess, as lot coverage, but they do allow water to infiltrate through. And as Mr. Raymond has explained in detail, you know, we were really thoughtful about the design of the drainage system, or the water retention system on the roof with an extensive modular green roof system that has a higher capacity than what is typical. Same, we're not proposing any parking. Again, we're in a kind of the historic buffer between, you know, the Paulus Hook neighborhood where parking, off-street parking is not permitted for developments less than 10 units. And then we have larger buildings with provision for parking. We are not proposing any parking in this to kind of be more in keeping with the character of the Paulus Hook neighborhood. So in summary, we're proposing five attached two-family homes and one playground space with planted areas that will serve the daycare that's at the ground level of the Belfuse Building, which is a historic structure that we are renovating at the interior. The proposed building height is four stories. As has been said, you know, we do need to elevate that first floor above the base flood elevation to an elevation of 11, so that all of the habitable spaces of the project are well above the floodplain, as well as any utilities. This drawing here shows how we do need to maintain existing openings on the Belfuse Building, but then we are proposing to demolish an existing overhang and also infill one of the existing windows on the Belfuse Building. And all of this has been presented to HPC and was approved as part of their review of the subdivision proposal. This drawing shows, is intended as a diagram to show the proposed coverage, which does include this, this is not building coverage, but actually lot coverage, which just shows the patio area in the back. So all of this is counted towards coverage. If we were to comply with the required coverage, we would have an even smaller building and, which would be difficult to make work, given the small depth of the lots. This diagram is showing, really highlighting that each of the units in this project has private outdoor space. So we have an eight-foot rear yard setback, which is less than the required 15 feet. But again, if we would do the 15-foot rear yard setback, the depth of the units themselves would be reduced to a point that it would be difficult to make the plan work. But we're using that eight-foot rear yard setback as an exterior patio for private outdoor space, which is very nice, and also provides a second means of egress from the, you know, we need to provide all of the windows on the rear of the facade, the bedroom windows open to the rear yard, and then have access to the public right-of-way via this, the blue line, which shows this pathway which leads to Morris Street. The main entrances to the townhouses are on Morris Street, and as Mr. Raymond mentioned, we're up several steps to reach that 11 elevation, and the red triangles indicate where we have entrances to the units. We have a common trash room that is accessed off of Van Vors Street, which is highlighted in the pink. And then the utility rooms are all also elevated above that, two feet above that base flood elevation, so they're out of the way of any kind of flood hazard. Our site plan here shows the planted area for the playground that serves the daycare use. And then we have our lighting plan, which just shows, you know, understated light fixtures that complement the proposed architectural design. To quickly go through the units, so the ground level, which is again elevated about four feet above existing grade, which is at 7.5 approximately, we're at 11, so, sorry, so it's like three and a half feet or so. The ground level, or first level of all of these units, these are two-bedroom units, largest one at the corner. And then we have, and this unit is about over 1,073 square feet at the corner with a lot of, you know, windows. And then we have, the four other units are basically mirrored, they're duplicated and mirrored, and they're each about 890 square feet. And then highlighted in blue and purple and pink are the stairs that lead up to the triplex units above. I do want to also point out that there are some planted areas here at the front of the building, and then we have our five-foot setback here. This is what I was mentioning. So we do meet that minimum five-foot setback requirement at the corner, but because of the shape of the lot and the taper that exists, that you can see in the lot line here, it tapers down, so we have a reduced setback as we get further, further east. At the second floor, this is the first level of the triplex units. It's living, dining, very large, open space. I think a lot of the idea behind these townhouses was to really encourage families to stay in Paulus Hook. I think one of the challenges of, for a lot of people downtown is that it's, you know, there are not a lot of large units for families, so a lot of people end up moving out. So the units are big, and they're really designed to encourage people to stay in the neighborhood and attend the schools and, you know, really build their families in Jersey City. The third floor plan, which is the second floor of the duplex, has, in the typical units, there's a very large kind of primary bedroom suite that fronts on Morris, a large, you know, bathroom, walk-in closet, and then a bedroom at the rear of each of the units with an en suite bathroom. At the corner unit, I mean, that's a, it's a little bit of a different kind of unit. We have two large, almost like primary suites, where you can imagine, you know, a parent staying, something like that. I mean, it's really encouraging the extension of these spaces to larger family. And then on the top floor of the triplex units, we have three bedrooms. So each of the triplexes are five-bedroom units. They're big. They're around 3,500 square feet each, which is quite large, but also very similar to, you know, what you'll see in some of the larger kind of brownstones and that you find in Paulus Hook. And so we have two smaller bedrooms at the rear, and then a large en suite bedroom with en suite bath and walk-in closet at the front. The roof plan, which we've talked about a little bit, and it sounds like the selection of the roof system has been updated since what we are showing here, to something that has a higher capacity than what we typically use. But you can see the size of the roof deck is actually pretty, you know, small. We didn't want to do anything too large, but there is space for an outdoor kitchen, and it's set back from the street, so it's not visible. And the roof deck is surrounded by the modular green roof tray system that Mr. Raymond spoke about. This is a drainage plan. And then we have our proposed elevations. So the existing elevation right now is, the Belfuse Building is a very beautiful historic brick structure, and then with the gray zinc addition. And then, of course, it's an open parking lot. The building that we're proposing, it really, we really view it as a transition, truly a buffer between the Historic District and the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan. So at the base of the building, we're using a red brick, which I have here. So we're using a red brick at the base of the building that really connects to what you see in the neighborhood and at the Belfuse Building. And then above, I don't know, just hold this. Sure. And then above, we're proposing a dark metal panel, and the orange panel here is the proposed color of the window frames, which is a custom color, which relates to the tones of the brick. And then we also have some fins that you can see in this elevation, these orange fins, which just create some dimension and visual interest at the corner. I do want to just kind of, it's a little hard, we're in artificial light here, but we did test these materials outside because, you know, we really didn't want to do a black building. We did look at this outside, and the way that the light hits this, we're facing south, we're facing west, we're getting a lot of sunlight. These, you know, this does not look super dark when you're outside. So we thought it was appropriate and actually complimented the base in brick very nicely, and this material as well. You know, it's got a kind of metallic quality that we thought was really great. At the rear of the building, we have a stucco, which we refer to as light. But again, like, once you get stucco in sunlight, it really looks much lighter than what the sample looks like. So we have actually been moving away from the lighter stuccos because it just, it looks, we think it fits better with the proposed metal panel and the rest of the palette, which is seen here. So this is the elevation on Morris Street. So you can see the rhythm of the townhouses is really articulated by the windows, which are large, and we think makes for a really bright, happy interior space that families are looking for. And it relates to, you know, the larger buildings across the street, which have, you know, very large windows. So we think it's a nice complement to that. The rear of the building is stucco with black metal frames, so it's definitely a simpler design. It's not visible from the public right-of-way at all. We're also showing wall-mounted condensing units on the rear of the building at a level that, you know, isn't visible, you know, from the street at all, and it's just a way of kind of keeping the mechanical equipment off the roof. And then this is a drawing that just shows the modifications to the Belfuse Building, which again was reviewed by Historic and approved as part of the subdivision approval that they issued. And then we have an axonometric view of the proposed project, which just gives you a sense of the kind of scale and relationship to the surrounding buildings. Our visual impact study or block elevations shows how, you know, in the Historic District, we do have smaller structures, or even, you know, we have one on the street that's also four stories. So we're really not proposing anything taller than what is found on the block. The block is variable, there's a kind of mix of buildings of different size, and then we're kind of stepping up to the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan, which is... which you can see in this elevation. The Morris Street block elevation, uh, there's more of a contrast, although you can see that there are some, there's, um, some buildings here that are four stories. So we're relating to that and, um, we could, um, imagine how this steps up to, um, the other building, larger buildings across the street. Visual impact assessment, this is just showing how we're not seeing, um, the railings around the roof deck or the bulkhead, um, when you're across the street. And then we have our building sections. And then some details. Shadow studies, um. Don't, I'm not gonna, I mean, what we're proposing is, is, it, it will obviously cast a shadow, but not larger than what is already being cast, um, across the street. And that would be, that's it, so shadow studies. So I'll just end on this axonometric view.
Thank you, uh, any questions?
So the, the biggest one that jumps out to me are the condenser units on the back of the building. How are they going to be serviced? Where do they drain to? Do they just drip?
Good question, I mean, that was, you know, let's see, let me go back to this. Well, I think it's, they may have to be mounted a little bit lower, um, but it's, yeah. That hasn't been totally worked out, admittedly, but, um, we didn't want to put them on the roof. So that was, I mean, I think it's accessed by ladder, but it's, yeah.
Have you ever serviced a condenser unit?
I mean, it's definitely done, all, I have not personally done it, but, um, yeah, it could be, could be difficult to reach those.
I wouldn't want to climb that ladder with equipment on me and.
Right.
And that's not a, it's not a flat surface back there, is it?
Well, it is, yeah, there is a little bit of a slope. Yeah, I mean, we could certainly look at another solution for that. I think that was, um, something that, you know.
I, I mean, besides the safety aspect of it, the.
Right.
The look of it is.
Yeah.
I don't want to sound extreme here, but that, that's appalling where they are right now.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe the alternative is to put them up on the roof.
Maybe they go on the roof, yeah. I think this, this came from, um.
Good intentions.
Good intentions, but yes, we could, we could put them on the roof, that might make more sense. That's usually what we do, or we can put one in the back yard servicing the ground floor unit and the upper unit could be serviced by one that's on the roof. That would be easy to do.
Well, now we need to talk screening too, so. If, you know, if that's the proposal, we need to see a different rendering.
Yeah. I think that we, I think we could, I could talk with the owner about putting them on the roof. I think that was, that was a request, um, that we do that, but I, I do think there are some practical issues. But there is space to screen them on the roof, let me go back to the roof plan. We do have a lot of space on the roof to work with, um, but yeah, we may need to, you know.
I mean, then your green roof calculations change as well.
Yeah, I think we're actually way over the requirement. I think if I saw it, Edwin, I, I don't know if Edwin, uh, Mr. Ramon is here, but, um, I know that we're way over the requirement, given this, um, system. So I don't, I don't think it would be a problem to, you know, create a smaller area here, maybe behind the bulkhead that could, um, you know, conceal a condensing unit. It's, it's really one unit, um, so we can use a mechanical screen. It wouldn't be visible from the public right of way, it would be kind of linked to the bulkhead. I don't think that's an insurmountable, um, thing, but yeah, point taken for sure.
So.
Yeah, yes. Well, that's what, that's what I was saying, on the ground floor, we have space.
No, 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 I mean, on the roof.
Oh, on the roof? Yeah, we could do that as well. I mean, they're already small, um, the roof decks are pretty small, but we could just put one, you know, probably not that big even, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, yeah, you'd have to be careful of degress there too.
I think we gotta give it a little more.
More, yeah, we're not gonna solve it right now.
No, just.
Yeah, but I think there's plenty of space to work with.
Mr. Harrington, just clarify for me. The addition and the re, the rehabbing of the building includes an addition?
No.
Does not include an addition?
No, the Belfus is not being worked on at all, except for the few changes that we presented to the HPC, which there are basically some encroachments off the, off the building that we're removing in order to, uh, move forward with this development.
Is that the overhang on Van Vorst?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that's encroaching into what's going to be created?
Correct.
So it's not an encroachment, it's.
Well, yeah, if, if we had left.
Encroachment after creation.
Correct.
So I'm looking at the subdivision drawing and I'm just trying to understand that overhang is being removed and that Tetris piece is not getting filled in with, with that townhouse? And again, I don't know if you have the.
We do.
Yes?
Now, the subdivision plan? Right there. What, what is the Tetris piece?
It's this.
All right, so that's being removed right there?
That's being removed.
Yes.
Maybe I'm looking at something that's changed. I'm looking at the major subdivision. Looks like the revision date on this was March seventh, twenty twenty-four, latest revision date. There you go, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
That's.
This is the Purnesti, yes.
Okay.
Is this right or is this not the right drawing?
Yes, I believe that's, that's correct. So you're, you're looking at the overhang, your question is about that?
I'm talking about the white Tetris piece where the overhang is, yes. What is?
That, that is, um, that's the, the figure ground, it's a, it's an accessway to a trash room, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, if you see on the site plan, that's where the trash enclosure is. As you walk, you walk from Van Vorst, uh, to the enclosure, there it is, if you enlarge that.
Yeah.
So you have a green space there and then you have the, the pathway to the shared trash room.
What property does that land go with, is my question?
Oh, that will be part of the corner lot.
So it's some kind of easement across that corner lot for the benefit of the other building?
Yes.
But it, and that trash room services which building?
All the buildings, correct?
Yeah, all of the townhouses, yeah, the, the ten units.
So everyone is gonna. And potentially the, the last lot if it's ever developed, I presume.
That's right, if it's ever developed, so, well, Nicole, you can explain it, how they're gonna bring out their trash.
Yeah, they would, um, go out their front door and walk around the corner, I mean, and put it in the trash room.
Why would they do that?
So that was not explained at all?
Okay, um.
But okay.
Yeah, no, that's the idea, is rather than putting it on the street, um, or, you know, in some other, it's just a way of centralizing the trash, trash collection. It's a little bit of an inconvenience, but.
Whose building is it part of?
It's part of the townhouses' construction, um, oh, you're saying who's.
The townhouses are not all one building, right?
No.
And we're subdividing for fee simple purposes.
Correct.
I see.
So we're not condo-ing this.
No, but there, there will be an easement in place for the benefit of the other lots, uh, for that purpose.
So the guy that gets that unit has that trash room as part of his structure or gal or whatever?
It's, it's behind their structure. There's, they don't have a, a rear yard like, uh, the other, um, parcels.
So that trash room is a separate structure?
I'm trying to. So it's under, you can see on the, um, second floor of, or the first floor of the triplex unit, it, um, butts up against the Belfus Building, but underneath it, so there's a kind of, um, covered outdoor, um, walkway where we have paving that leads to the trash room.
So on the next floor.
Which is this, yes.
That powder room is above that trash room?
Yes.
And is it footing and foundation for that building, that trash room? Is it part of the footing and foundation work of that end unit?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Creative. Okay. And we're gonna have some kind of cross easements for all of that, is what you're saying?
Yes. And that's what, it's easy to do now, cause it's all common ownership, uh, so we, we can create the necessary easements and we're done.
I, I just, from a practical standpoint, I don't see why anyone would carry their garbage down the street and around the corner when they're just gonna, you know, it's easier to put it in a bag and leave it on the street. I, I don't see the point. Maybe I'm missing something, I don't know.
Was there a reason for a trash room?
I think it's to.
A common trash room?
Yeah, it's to centralize the trash so that we don't have, um, trash bags on the street at all. It's, it's to prevent that.
Who's gonna pull that out for pickup? Is everybody gonna go there and pull their own trash out?
Uh, yeah, there would be a bin and you would just go out with your bag and I, I don't know.
But on collection.
On pickup day.
On pickup day.
On pickup day, who takes it outside?
Two nights of trash, one night of recycling, who's responsible for moving that out?
Um, the homeowner.
The one homeowner for all of the other.
The individual homeowners would have to be responsible for bringing their trash.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna do that. Why would you go, unless you had a maintenance company or a super that could just get accomplished, why would I go and dig into other people's garbage and find out which one's the one that I left there on Monday? And I'll take it out on Friday?
So perhaps this can be thought about a little bit more, but the, the, the room still has utility. It could be the trash room for that corner unit if it's, if it's not desirable to keep it as shared. And it could be, become some sort of private storage as well for that corner lot. So I, I think the, it still has utility as design, whether or not they go with a shared trash, uh, concept or not.
Yeah, cause I mean, ul- ultimately, the unit owners could decide to put it in their backyard to area as well if they, they wanted. The idea is just, uh, you can't put the trash out on the street unless it's collection day anyway. It's just a, the idea is to have, have a, uh, another option for you.
In my neighborhood, you'll see people that, cause their houses together, and you see people putting cans in front of their house, you know, and you don't want that.
No.
You don't want cans on the sidewalk waiting for the trash day so they can just move it a couple more feet to the curb. It doesn't, it doesn't make it for a good clean neighborhood, you know?
I just can't imagine that the guy all the way or the gal or all the way by the play area, the playground area, is gonna walk the hundred feet to the corner, a hundred feet down the block, to go into this trash room to pull their garbage out to the street. I have a hard time getting anybody to take the trash down the driveway, which is thirty feet.
Yeah.
And it's not his or her problem at that point, right? They're so far removed, the person in that end unit. Kind of that person's problem, perhaps. I only asked the question, cause I couldn't appreciate it on the drawing. I didn't.
We, we.
Realize all of this.
We don't have any provisions for a townhouse to have a shared trash facility like this. There's no provisions in, uh, it for a one and two unit building anywhere in the city. So, uh, it is not a requirement of the plan to do a shared, uh, trash facility, or even make provisions for such facility. It is left because it is, it is a, a personal preference often. So I, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if they can just, uh, reprogram it as part of this, uh, decision tonight to just be private to that unit. Maybe that's something for the board to consider.
But they still have to then address trash, or no?
No.
No.
No, they don't. Just like any one, two unit building. Okay, but is that piece carved out in the subdivision separately? Or that's part of that lot and it would be an easement after the fact?
That's correct.
Okay.
So as, as Matt said, if it's not a trash room, it could be another, you know, some kind of common room, room that, that could be used, but there'll definitely be an easement for the use by the, the respective property owners.
Okay. I, I mean.
Well, but if it's not gonna be a trash room, and I don't, I don't know if we're making this, but if it's not a trash room, why then wouldn't it just go to that triplex? Why would the other people have the need to even go over there? And what would, you would repurpose it into some kind of common.
But we, we could, I mean.
Use or you'd add it to that unit?
We could, I'll defer to the board, I mean, if it's not a trash room, if they prefer, it's not, if it's not a trash room, then to, to have it just attached to that corner unit, that's, that's okay as well.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to see any of that and see how it's reprogrammed and if the board prefers to do away with this concept or not.
I, I don't, I don't design buildings. I, I don't come up with these plans. I've, you know, I'm here to vote on what's presented to me. The condenser units alone are, are a massive problem for me. Uh, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you to stop your presentation and pull this right now. I'm just saying, I, I have serious concerns about the condenser units, where they're located, how they're gonna be serviced. So, you know, I'm, I'm voting what I'm presented with. I, I think, um.
Well, I think we can, we can definitely put the condensing units on the roof. Uh, we have plenty of space, even just using the existing proposed, uh, deck area, and that is usually what we do, um, it's very practical.
Yeah, I have to say it.
We already, our visual assessment diagram demonstrated that it won't be visible at all from the public right of way. If we would screen the units, um, they wouldn't be bigger than, than any kind of normal condensing unit. So I think it's reasonable to say that we would put them on the roof deck and screen them. And that could be a condition, um.
I, I want to see the screening on, on a drawing.
You know, that's not, that's a little more than I'm willing to condition. I, I think we, you know, if that's the proposal, if we're gonna move them to the roof, we need to see a drawing that they're screened.
So would, would the board prefer that we? Come back with that screening and then, and then proceed? I don't wanna get ahead of myself here, I mean, we've committed, we'll commit to, to putting the condensers on the roof.
So I think the answer to that question is yes. I think the only other question is. Do you want to address that trash room? Or do you wanna move forward with it as proposed?
Well, I think we'll.
That's up to you, right? The chair was clear that he's not gonna make that decision. The comments are what they are as far as. General. Thoughts about it, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in the marketing business to think about what that space could be purposed for, what's marketable to your clients. It's, that's not a decision I should be making on your behalf.
Good, well, I, we'll look at that issue while we take a look at the, the condenser issue.
Yeah.
And then come back and, and show it to the board so that you have it all together.
Okay.
Before they move forward with that, I have something else I would like, maybe they could look at it too. It's just a safety aspect in the playground area. In the back of the playground area, we have a fence that leads out to the easement. And we also ha- a door, I mean, that leads out to the easement. And we also have a door that leads to the back of townhouse properties. What is the safety aspect of people that are children that are playing in that playground? Or anybody going into the townhouse property back area?
So these, these gates are all, the gates that you see kind of in line at, at the rear of each unit. Open in one direction, so they're kind of push gates in an emergency, they're only intended for emergency use.
Okay.
To access the means of egress, so it's not something that would, you know, uh, we're not, it's, it's not designed for residents.
That stays open.
Yeah, it does not stay open.
So it's locked?
Those are locked and the daycare exits from this door here. To access, it's a second means of egress for the daycare to get out to the street and also to access the playground. But the kids aren't, you know, residents aren't going to be using this except.
Because they are gonna use the easement though. Let's just can use that easement to get out.
Well, that's the egress.
Yeah.
So they're not locked.
That's what it's for.
It's a, a push bar, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a push bar.
Yeah, the egress, they're, they're gonna be using the egress, so that's what my concern is, is. People from the townhouses in that same area as the playground, but that you, to have a lock bar, yes. So all I'm, all I'm seeing is a, a door, you know? So.
So those are all fences, obviously, between the townhouses, that's a fence into the playground area.
That's right.
Is that back fence private, like they, are you gonna be, if, okay, let's put it this way. I come out of my, that easement, I come out of that egress, I'm in the back of that space looking into the playground? Can I see through that fence?
No, this is a, it's a, it's a board on board fence.
Board on board?
Staggered, um.
Good, okay.
Planks, you can see it here, it's, um.
Good, that's, that, that's, that's what I was hoping you said.
Yeah, no, there's the, yeah.
Okay.
No view into the playground area.
Yeah. That fence surrounds that playground area, but the green space in the front of that lot as proposed is open to the street like we see it.
Yes.
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 And is that for anybody?
That's for, um, it's like a common green space, it's just green space landscaping.
But it's open to the public, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And not part of that playground for the children?
Yeah.
That is my question.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything while we're? While we're on it? Okay, Matt, do you have a, a date? Or counsel, do you have a? An idea on when we can? Get this back in front of us?
Take long, I mean, we could revise these very quickly.
Yeah, um, what's, it's obviously not the next date?
Uh, October sixth, I think, is the first October meeting.
I think.
Oh, is it eighth? Yeah, okay, eighth. That was, it's probably the best. I think the next meeting in September is very, very packed.
They don't make that.
So to add more would be. Probably not great. So carry to the October eighth meeting? Would be preferred.
Okay, so. Motion, I guess?
Yep.
Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to carry case P two three dash zero eight three to Oc- October eighth meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to carry case P two three dash zero eight three to a date certain October eighth.
And.
Do we want separate?
Different motion.
Do we want separate?
I was gonna make a different motion.
Okay, um, vice chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Counselwoman Prinzery.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to also carry case P two three dash zero eight four to date certain of October eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Counselwoman Prinzery.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you, counsel. Mike, do you, uh, wanna get a break now while we're in between? Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break, everybody. And we'll call item sixteen, case P two zero two four dash zero one zero six is a preliminary and final major site plan for one nineteen Merritt Street.
Tom Lean of Connel Foley, for the record, the application is a preliminary and final major with variances. I did post my affidavit of notice to the portal, but I will provide the original to counsel.
Thank you.
Chairman, I received the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one nineteen Merritt Street. It does appear to be the same one that was posted at the portal. I've had the opportunity to review it, it does appear to be in order, we're gonna mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. Just to give a little bit of background here, this, this property is known as a one one nine Merritt Street. It is one of the last properties in Jersey City before you cross over into Bayonne. It abuts the Conrail tracks and the highway. At the end of Merritt where, where Old Bergen meets Merritt. This board actually heard and approved an application at this site about two and a half years ago in twenty twenty two. The approval at that time was to take this somewhat odd shaped piece of property, it's a very long property that runs along the tracks. It's undersized for the zone, which is the Port Industrial, we don't deal with the Port Industrial in front of this board a lot. The Port Industrial is a zone that, that deals with much larger lots, eighty thousand square feet. We're here, we're, we're about twenty seven five hundred. And the, the proposal was to, to take this site that frankly is in bad shape, it's. It was used by Conrail, even though they didn't have an easement to access the, the, the tracks. It's heavily forested, um, there's no sidewalks in front of it, there's no curbing. It really just sort of is a, a cap piece at the, the end of the road there. And our client was hoping to utilize it as an auto body shop. This board did approve a two bay auto body shop along with a, a self automated car wash. The board approved that application, but with some heavy caveats to it. Namely that we meet with traffic and engineering and basically redesign not only the entrances to, to the property. But also the striping on the road in order to, to end the signage on the road to make sure that we had safe ingress and egress. We did meet with traffic, there was at least two site visits. And eventually we did hammer out what we thought was a, a pretty good safety plan and they signed off on what we were proposing as far as the striping and signage for the property. Unfortunately, in the interim. My client paved a portion of the property that was not approved by this board for the auto body shop. I believe he either got bad advice or was misinformed about what he was allowed to do with that parcel. And thereafter, he was ticketed for it for having a, an illegal parking lot. And we did go through the municipal court process, he did plead guilty to that ticket. And he now realizes he made a mistake. And what we're here now in front of the board is to try and rectify that mistake by trying to integrate that parking area into the original proposal. We also took a, took a look at what the board had originally approved and took some of the, the concerns the board had, especially about the car wash into consideration. The board had issues with the fact that they thought there might be queuing onto the road for people waiting for the car wash and that it might. Cause some significant circulation issues on the property. Therefore, we removed the car wash from the proposal. And instead, we're just going to have this be strictly an auto body shop with, with enough parking for that use on the site. We're hoping to integrate that parking area that my client should not have paved over into the proposal. And in this process, we've done a lot of work with city engineering and city traffic, including an additional site visit. To really go over the improvements to the property to not only make it safe to enter and exit. But also to have safe internal circulation. As part of the proposal, we will be putting in new sidewalks along the property. We will be putting in new landscaping along the property. And per the, the other signage and safety proposals as far as striping of the road, that will be also incorporated into, to the improvements that we're making to, to the property. So what we're proposing this evening is a six bay auto body shop. There will be twenty parking spaces, eighteen for the auto body use and two for the, the onsite office there. We do have some variances, they are essentially the exact same variances that were approved as part of the original approval. But we're going to request them again because this is a new application based on the amount of coverage that we are putting onto the property. So with that, I'm gonna have Jeff Lewis come up and run you through the plans. And then I think the, the most important testimony this evening is gonna come from Lee Klein as our traffic expert to, to talk about access and egress onto the site.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay.
And Mr. Lewis, just for the record, you were sworn in already tonight, you were qualified tonight. And if you could just say for the record, you understand that you're still under oath?
For the record, I do understand that I am still under oath.
Okay, thank you, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So as was mentioned, we are proposing a new service station here on the property. It is a very strange and long property, it's about fifty feet wide and four hundred fifty or so feet long, so it's a very long and narrow property. There's one existing building on the property, it's located all the way at the western corner here, it's a two story concrete structure. We are going to be keeping that building and utilizing it as an office and as the waiting area and a customer counter area for, for the property. And I'll show you the floor plans for that to be a little clearer. And we're also proposing a new one story building along the back property line here. There is some storage space as well as six garage bays in this building. So as you can see, well, not as you can see, but I'll show you a photo later of the existing conditions. There are mostly no curbs or sidewalks on the site, so we are proposing many improvements there. So we'll have all new concrete curbs, all new concrete sidewalks. There will be three curb cuts. One located here in the center of the property, that's the entrance to the site. And then two exits, one here to Avenue C, and this is a right turn only. And then a second, secondary exit at the end of the property here, which is also a right turn only lane. There's also two new ADA curb ramps to cross the street, one here near Old Bergen Road and then a second here towards the end of our property. And then we are also proposing eight new street trees as part of this application. Looking on our site, as was mentioned, we have twenty new onsite parking spaces. Two of them are located right near the office, there are six here right next to the garages. And then twelve in that rear parking area that was already paved that we discussed previously. We are provo- proposing some landscape buffers around the site. We have some here on Avenue C, as well as many here and all the way down here along Merritt Street, so most of Merritt Street has landscape buffers. The other thing I wanted to mention about the rear parking area, it actually is elevated up a few feet, there's a little bit of a hill to get up there. So to help mitigate that, we're proposing a new retaining wall along Merritt Street. It starts about where that easement, in air quotes, begins. And extends all the way to that, that second exit at the eastern end of the property. On top of that wall, there's going to be a six foot wood fence that continues along the front of the property and also along the side and the whole rear of the property. With that, let me just talk a little bit about operations and how circulation here is going to work. As I mentioned, we do have the one main entry from Merritt Street. So people would come in and generally be met by an attendant who's going to direct them where to go, whether it's directly into a bay or to park basically right in front of them. There's a couple of different services here, so some people would stay here and wait in the waiting room, some people might choose to leave their car and come back for it later. However, most of the internal circulation of cars is going to be dealt with by employees themselves, they'll be the ones taking the cars into the bays, out of the bays. If people leave their cars to come back, the secondary lot here is going to be used to store their cars while they're gone. When they come to pick them up or if they waited to get them, their car would be brought to the exit on Avenue C. And left here for them to pick it up and leave right next to the waiting room. So and again, as I mentioned, this is a right turn only out of Avenue C, and then there is a secondary exit that we intend mostly for. For employees, not really for clients to use. And then the last thing was that shaded area, I think it's kind of been clarified that, that. It's, it's a right of way for, that Conrail has been using to access their tracks, however, there is no legal easement there, but we're working with them to. To make that happen. We acknowledge that they do need to get to their tracks. Here, we're looking at the new floor plans. The top right is for the existing building that we'll be renovating. The ground floor is waiting room, customer counter and an existing half bath. Then there's a second floor that's just an office and again, an existing half bath. We're refinishing the exterior of this building too, right now, it's just a two story masonry building. The ground floor, we're leaving the masonry, we're gonna be painting it charcoal gray. The second floor is going to be finished with a green vertical corrugated metal siding. We are proposing two signs on the building. The first is a large sign that's facing Avenue C and that sign is about seventy six and a half square feet. The second sign is above the door facing Merritt Street, that sign is twenty five square feet. And then moving down, we do have the one story new shop. That's shown here, we have two storage spaces in the front and then we have three garages, each with two bays. And they are gonna be used for. Individual uses, so the first garage would be for auto repair, the second would be for oil changes, the third is going to be for tire changes. Then moving down to the new buildings elevations, we did. Choose materials that are going to match the existing building, so we have a CMU base that's also charcoal gray. That same green vertical corrugated metal paneling. And then we do have the six garage doors, which are also going to be steel roll up doors and they'll be painted white. Or they'll come white. doors, and they'll be painted white, or they'll come white. And then here, we are seeing a few photos of the existing site. Down on the right here, that is that existing building we're going to be reusing and refinishing. And then here are some pictures from Merritt Street where you can pretty clearly see no curbs, no sidewalks, no street trees, no landscaping, nothing but asphalt, really. Um, that's really it, there's not a lot of architectural here. As was said, Lee's testimony is gonna be the main stuff, um, but I can answer as many questions as you have now, if you like.
Counsel, do we have pictures of the entire site currently showing this paved parking area?
Do we have any pictures of that on here?
Of the new paved area?
Yeah.
Not on my drawings. Did you bring any, Chuck? Charles?
Mr. Height does have them, and as, before he begins his main testimony, I, he can provide them unless the board would like to hold off until he gets them.
Right. For the, to note, the plan is basically what was there. So this is, this is what the paving area is, what the plan is showing. That's what was, was done, except for... We don't have that secondary exit that we added here, that's not there. So right now, it's just a dead end and all this paving is existing. So, and we will show you pictures, but that's, that's basically what was built.
Quick question? Okay. I, um, I live very close to this area, and, um, so what you're saying is the, the, let's start with this, the, where the little building structure is now, you have two-way traffic, right? One going towards Avenue C, one going, isn't there a different elevation where you have the, where the tree scrape is, uh, where the buil- where you propose to put the building, right?
Over here.
Right? I'm going towards, um, east.
Mm-hmm.
That's a different elevation. There's a ramp height difference there?
There's, there's a little bit of a hill, this is mostly flat, this section, but the, the rear parking area, there's a little bit of a hill up to it.
There's a little bit of hill, so you're gonna be using that section that's up there that I see all the time, right? That's not part of Conrail. That's...
That's, that's not part of Conrail.
That's not part of, because it, it looks, so, when, now, let's go to the two pitches that you showed.
Sure.
The two pitches, you see the tree scape and the fences? Is that part of Conrail?
I think the existing...
The chain link fences there?
I think the fences are their property line, is that correct?
Is that the property line?
No, it's actually further back.
It goes further back.
It goes further back.
Yeah, it goes further back. We're about 50 feet back.
Are you cutting into that hill and taking dirt out?
No, 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 that hill, I can show you on the site plan, that hill is actually cut out.
On one side it is, yes.
Yeah. So you could see the cutout of the property here?
Yes.
That's where we have that, that's, that piece that comes down.
That piece that comes down.
That's where that is, yeah.
And that's where you're gonna put the building up against?
But, yes, so the building is going to act as a retaining wall, we have a two-foot, uh, two-foot-thick block wall for the back wall of that. However, by the time it gets there, it's only gonna be like this high or so, because it is coming down.
Yes.
So it won't be much of a hill by the time it gets to our building. And then, and then once we get towards the back of the property, we're coming up, and so we're more...
The fence is coming down, and you're gonna go as tight as to Conrail's property as possible.
Correct.
Basically what you're doing.
Yes. However, we are...
As much as I look at that, I don't, I know you gotta tape measure like me, but as much as I look at it, I don't see it.
We're, we are, we're close, we're, we're close to their property, we're up against their property where that hill is, but then we step back, the property steps out another 10 or 15 feet, so we, we're not right up against the tracks.
Then later on, when we see the other pitches, we're gonna see the same thing, uh, the part that he paved, and the tracks are right there.
Right. The tracks are close there, yes.
They're really close to it, right?
They're closer there, yes.
So how much of an easement, how much of an easement you think you're gonna get with Conrail to make it?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
That you're not walking on the tracks?
I, I'm...
We are, we're building a, uh, there's gonna be a six-foot wood fence between...
Six-foot wood fence going that way?
On our rear property line in between...
Whatever Conrail needs on their property line.
So counsel, we need to do a better job of identifying direction.
Okay.
So let's use...
Okay, I see that now, alright.
You know, north, southeast, and west.
Sure, sure. So...
The purposes of the record.
Okay. So, so the property runs lengthwise east to west, with Merritt Street bordering to the north. The Conrail tracks are to the south of the property and above the property.
Can we stop changing the exhibit, please? We go back to the page we were on.
Okay. So, the property runs from, sorry, west to east. The Conrail property is down here and the tracks abut it to the south, and here is Merritt Street to the north. Okay? The train tracks are on the raised platform behind the property that we abut, and then there is a slight rise in the property, and this entire area is basically flush with where the track is. Okay? Conrail was using this line here as access to the tracks, basically going from Merritt Street up the little hill to the tracks.
Understood.
Yes. Conrail, we thought, had an easement through here. They do not have an easement through here. We are in the process of negotiating an easement with them, so they need this access. So the hope is, is that mutually, if there is anything that needs to be done as far as access both for our construction and for them to get to their train tracks, we'll be able to work together.
You're having a space.
Correct. I am not representing my, the, uh, my client on that matter, because I have a conflict with Conrail, but that, that is, conversation is ongoing and is my understanding that it's a good conversation right now.
Commissioner Torres and Chair, um, I have the survey of the property and its present condition, if we'd like to bring that up for reference.
It's just gonna show how, it doesn't show...
I can't tell you what it shows until I see it. So...
The money that I have is not gonna answer my questions.
Do you think it might?
I...
Okay. Do you need your question answered?
You can compare it up for the rest of the questions here.
Okay.
Is this, is this working, Cam?
Let's show it, don't they?
No, it's not.
So counsel, we're gonna show the survey.
We're gonna show the survey and then, and then Mr. Height does have pictures of the area that has been paved.
The survey was submitted by you?
Yes, it was.
Yes, the survey is on the public portal.
Right.
And that's where I'm accessing it from.
But you just don't have it in your slide deck, is that?
Yeah, the survey is in...
Because it's your drawings.
It was all the way at the back, I was getting there.
Before I told you to stop flipping.
So what, those are shrubs now? We've lost control of the ship.
Yes.
This doesn't help, this is an existing condition survey.
That is showing the new parking lot.
Yeah, it is. But okay, does that help you in terms of the rail, Mr. Torres?
I can still see, uh, the new parking lot, when you're looking at it, you drive by it.
Which new parking lot?
The parking lot that was paved.
Correct.
The railroad tracks look just, hopefully, though, I, my question only is, is, if there's an easement, how close are they to the, to that parking track? Where are you gonna put that fence up? That you still have parking spaces?
The, the, the parking spaces will be entirely within our line, so there, there won't be an easement necessary. The, they'll be entirely within my client's property.
I get on top of, okay, do I see the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Parking cars here, so, one, alright, so now I see where it says Jersey Barrier, right? Iron rod set, okay? You're gonna put a fence up in that section there?
It's gonna go along that southern, the southern property line.
So the people that come out of the parking spots won't be on the tracks?
They won't, that's correct.
So it looks really...
There'll be a six...
It might be deceiving.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it looks fairly close, but there's gonna be a six-foot fence between the tracks and the parking cars.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So the fence as depicted is... The fence isn't depicted, is that fair?
Well, not on the survey, but it's shown on the...
Right, not on the survey.
Correct.
Is it going to be on the property line?
Correct.
Where that iron rod is set?
Correct.
And that Jersey barrier hashing, is that some kind of retaining wall or...
Right, right now, it's, yes, it's, it's basically to prevent cars from driving onto the tracks if they're parked there. So that will be replaced with, with the fence as a more aesthetically pleasing option instead of a Jersey barrier.
And I'm just trying to help Commissioner Torres in terms of...
I see, I see that now.
Does that give us the distance from that iron rod to those parking spaces?
It's 10 feet. It's a 10-foot step back.
Okay, so the parking spaces are 10 feet from where the fence is proposed to be?
Correct. There's a 10-foot space between, yes.
Fence and the parking spaces. And then whatever distance from the fence to the tracks, Commissioner.
Okay, can we go back to Mr. Lewis's drawing? Uh, as long as you're, you're good at it.
Do you want to see the pictures of the existing conditions of the parking area before we do that, or do you want Jeff to just go back to his?
Um, let, let's see the pictures first.
Okay.
Were these submitted or these were not submitted? Alright, so let's back up, and let's mark, how many you got? You gotta talk, Mr. Height.
Still under oath. Hi, was waiting till someone introduced me.
I got you. Mr. Height, did you take these photographs?
Yes.
Or do they accurately depict the site that you have visited?
Yes, today.
Okay. First photograph is from what vantage point?
So this helps with, um...
Beautiful sky.
The sub- the subject property has an existing structure on it, it's a two-story structure. It's on the, uh, eastern portion of the property, so... Western, western. Sorry, western portion of the property, so as you make your way east, um...
Photo facing east.
Correct. Um, this is where there's a parking area that's level with the surface of the pavement. Um, there is that fence, uh, there's no sidewalk, that's part of the proposed improvements. Um, as you move further east, um, you have the, what would be part of the new pavement that you see coming up from the street, and this is where the increase in that ramp up to the, uh, furthest portion of the property, um, where you have a higher level in terms of topography. So this is part of the, um, proposed, that would have...
Stop right there. Can you tell me by looking at this photograph if this proposed ramp depicted in this photograph more or less lines up with the depiction of what was being described as the Conrail non-documented easement?
Yes.
Okay. So we're about halfway down the site.
Yeah, and then this is, um, looking back west, uh, so you see some of the vehicles are currently parked at the higher elevation, this is portion of the unpaved area right along, oh, on the subject property but near the property boundary with Conrail. And then this is a view at, at the top portion of the property in terms of elevation of that paved area.
The quote-unquote "new paved area."
Correct. So I, I think the third photo probably gives you an understanding of how one portion of the property is accurate with the street, this is the ramp up to another portion that had paving recently.
I, let me see, I, um... I think the next photo that you showed, where the two cars are sitting on top, that shows a better clearing, that clears enough for me that there's enough space. You don't see that when you're on the road. When you're at the lower level...
Correct.
You can't tell, it looks like the tracks are basically right at the edge.
Correct.
This, I never climbed up there, so, you know, I'm like, so, this, this shows me that there is a buffer there, there is a clearance there that nobody could be on the tracks, so that clears it for me, from my understanding of the spot. I pass it about eight times a day, so it's like...
Okay.
I know.
So counsel, we're gonna mark those, I counted five photographs, A2 through A6.
Please provide these digitally to planning staff as well for posting on the portal.
Do that. So, Mr. Lewis and counsel, you might wanna get in on this one too.
Probably.
According to the, the resolution on our...
According to the resolution on the last decision, item 16, talks about, pa-pa-pa-pa-pa, to mitigate the requested variance, a new sidewalk and multiple trees are proposed along Merritt Street improving the existing condition. Further, almost the entirety of the east portion of the property is currently landscaped and will remain so, with conditions approved, improved areas that are currently uncounted. This proposed landscaping mostly fronts on the R1 district mitigating any sightlines from low-impact residential homes. Additional bushes are proposed on the property along the existing structure in front of the proposed parking spaces and in front of the drive aisle queue, further limited sightlines onto the property from the residential zone. Due to mitigation and the improvement of the existing conditions, the variance can be granted pursuant to legal, legal, legal. Can, can we focus on that and show us where that is and what's changed on this plan? Absolutely. Versus that resolution? Sure. So, um, the paved area that my client was not supposed to have paved, admittedly, um, was previously almost entirely forested, let's call it. Um, that has now been paved. Um, one thing I, I didn't mention in my opening was that, um, I met with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ridley, and, uh, she also raised concerns about sightlines and visibility from, uh, the R1. That is why we are proposing the six-foot fence up there that fronts onto Merritt, that was at her request. So that at least gets into the mitigation from, from the visibility standpoint, I hope. Um, we are, as previous, uh, per the previous approval, we are providing the sidewalks. Uh, we are providing, um, I think we're providing more sidewalk than had been approved under the previous approval. The sidewalks will go further down from, uh, where they were previously approved to, where I think it, it stopped just, uh, after the original driveway. We're providing more trees than we did and more plantings, uh, in front of that paved area as well. Um, and then one of the things, uh, that we can also, uh, speak to is, is that where we've, uh, provided stormwater drawings, uh, to show that there is gonna be some onsite detention, uh, to, to mitigate some of that, that additional coverage that's, um, that's been added by that, that paving. So, um, you know, this is a new application. Uh, I understand that the arguments we made previously for those variances, part of it was that the other portion of the property would...
the other portion of the property would remain unpaved, unfortunately is now paved, and we're trying to mitigate that or at least ameliorate that changed condition through the fencing and additional landscaping and improvements to the property.
But we're, we're mitigating it by keeping the pavement rather than removing it and bringing it to, you know, obviously, we're not gonna get old growth back.
Understood.
But we're, we're mitigating it by keeping the asphalt and building a fence there where...
I understand that.
You know, thi, this is a, a different stormwater situation now.
Understood, we do understand that. Um, one thing I would raise is that the parking consideration here is different under the ordinance. I, we needed 20 parking spaces for, for this use. Um, you know, I, I, I can't speak to whether this board would have granted a parking variance. It would have been required if we didn't have that additional area for these cars. Um, and, you know, I, again, while I, my, my client realizes he should not have done what he did, uh, we're left with a situation where we've gotta make this the best site that we, we possibly can, and, uh, I think we're, we're trying to do that with, with the improvements that we're, we're proposing to as part of this application.
Chairman, that's for the board to decide.
Yeah.
Uh, I can appreciate the argument, but...
No, it, it's just, you know, the... The resolution doesn't... The, this new site plan being the resolution for your client doesn't really make the property whole like it was before. It, it doesn't do anything to, you know, a six-foot fence is much different than the trees that were there before. So, you know, i- it's... I, I guess it just comes down to what we think is the best solution tonight. So I, I really have nothing else to say about it.
I have one quick question, counsel, do you know, um, you have any idea how much vegetation was, was thrown down? Like, were there trees, what kind of?
I, I think the only trees that were on the site were actually, um, a budding Merritt. I don't think that there were trees in the area that was paved. I, I, I'd have to go back and look to see if I can find some pictures, uh, maybe even from Google Earth on what it looked like prior to the paving. Um, but I, I think it was really more just overgrown, full of plants, um, kinda rocky. Uh, I don't know if there was a tremendous amount of trees that were removed.
Right, okay.
Because it, it would have been a lot of work to remove that, to do that paving, but I, I, I can't speak to it. I don't have those exist, the prior existing conditions with it.
So then, in, if I may, in the resolution, it says it is currently landscaped, but it sounds like it was not currently landscaped, it was overgrown. And, you know, and again, saying that your client needed the extra parking spaces, so he took the parking spaces and now we're gonna put a fence up, like... You know, I, I, you know, and, and knowing the issues we have with our tree canopy and knowing the issues we have with flooding in areas and the need for these kind of permeable surfaces, that would have been a better solution here, but now it seems like you're... It, it sounds like there, there's a, there's just a disconnect with what was also in this resolution. I mean, as, as I'm reading it, I may be incorrect here, but as I'm reading it.
I think it's, it's the board's resolution, I think the sentence is right.
One, one thing I would say is again, that that area was used by, it was used by Conrail for access. It, it was passable, uh, you know, a truck could get up there. I think it was just, it wasn't really in any kind of paved or used way. I think it was just sort of a rocky hill that was overgrown.
That's all it...
Well, the...
Basically, that's, was just, there was never any trees. Uh, it's just, it's a lot of overgrown, a lot of garbage, a lot of badly caused, and a lot of, uh, Conrail trucks. Since I've moved to the neighborhood, I saw that was there. Um, I think the six-foot fence is more for setback south, that it's not part of the... I don't think it was part of the part that was ripped out for the paving of the road, where the six-foot fence is gonna go.
Well, that's correct, I, I'm talking about a six-foot fence between the Conrail track and the property, and then also what was proposed was a six-foot fence along Merritt to prevent visibility from the road of the parking area.
The parking area, okay.
I'm talking about two, two different fences.
Two different fences, okay.
Serving two, two different purposes.
Yeah, but the, I don't know, it, it seemed like it was always just a lot of overgrown area. Um, quick question though, for the architect. If this moved fo, if this moved forward, you are paving that road anyway that's coming from Avenue C all the way up to the end of the property on the east side, right?
Yes.
It'll be all paved going up the hill?
Yes.
Paved anyway because you were gonna be driving cars back and forth on that road?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
And then the same as you're gonna be paving down the ramp on the east side to exit the property?
Correct.
Right? That would have a cutout for a driveway, right, to exit the property? All that stuff that's not existing right now.
That's right, it's, is it, the parking lot that they built is a dead end right now.
Yeah, because even on Avenue C, it's just that the gate is there, they open up the gate and you go over the curb.
Yeah, that's not a curb.
Yeah, yeah, there's no cutout there, it's just a curb going over.
That's right.
It doesn't exist.
The only curb on the lot.
They only made it an entrance because somebody put a gate up and put a, the gate that opens, that's why it's an entrance. Bye.
All done without permission?
Yes, and, but I...
Listen, I moved to the neighborhood 18 years ago. Maybe, oh, 19 years ago, so it's been like that ever since I lived there, in that neighborhood, that's now's... That's exactly, it, it used to be used by the buses, but the buses had the same thing. They, they didn't use the property on the top. Conrail did. The buses used it close to the building just to go in and out, but they went over the sidewalk and not, there was no cutout for that.
No, there's no curb there at all.
I'm talking about the parking lot to the east. I'm not talking about curbing, no curbing, any of that. Yes.
But even the parking lot to the east is gonna eventually be asphalted, right?
It was not going to be, it has been.
They were not supposed to...
It, it was supposed, as per our resolution, it was supposed to be improved. The un, it, it's, what is it, the second sentence? Further, almost the entirety of the east portion of the property is currently landscaped and will remain so, with conditions improved to the areas that are currently unkempt. The end of that sentence, is that the area that we're talking about that was paved?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you for saying it, um, because I, I'm, you know, I'm in my head thinking, am I talking about the same area that's in the resolution?
You are.
Okay. So are we supposed to go back and relitigate the old variances? That this, a, as far as I'm concerned, those variances are void because that was one of the proofs for the variances?
It was certainly part of the, the argument for it, and I, I will leave it to Mr. Height to, to make the case for it. I, I think the biggest reason for the, the variances is, is the, the nature of the site. Um, they all almost relate to the, the setbacks.
It, it's a difficult site, I understand that, but that's...
And there are, there are requirements, setback requirements that, in this zone, that were set for a, an 80,000-foot lot. This is, this is a 27,000-foot lot.
Sure.
Um, and, and when, when Mr. Height gets, gets into the proofs for it, I, I, I will, I believe that the case is still there, uh, especially because of the hardship of the undersized nature of the lot. And, you know, we can, we can call it relitigating, this is a new application, um, and it's, it's up to us as the applicant to make the case for those variances again and anew. Uh, I don't think we can really con, consider the previous application because it's, it's, it's a new, it's a new application to this board and we're, we're asking you to consider that.
Well, the, the existing conditions are completely different now because your, your client changed them.
Oh, and let's, let's, let's be clear. Right now, we've got a site that is not in compliance with anything.
That's correct.
Right?
Yep.
So this is in essence, let's just move forward and forget anything before today. That is the applicant's hope.
That is the applicant's hope and contention, yes.
I guess...
Oh, it's up, it, it's up to the board, does the board want to move forward? Does the board, I mean, you can hear it.
I mean, I'm not gonna vote on it right this second, obviously, we, you know...
But yeah, it's out of compliance, I guess, is...
Okay.
Is the reality. And I think that counsel's been very upfront about that.
Absolutely, I agree.
And, you know, I, the, the mechanism for a property being not in compliance is, is a ticket from the city, which my client received.
Sure.
He pled guilty to, paid his fine, and, uh, again, the hope here is to, is to try and ameliorate his mistake and make this the best site we can possibly make it, um, considering the limited amount of uses that are permitted in this zone and the limited amount of things that can be done with a property of this size in this zone.
But, once again, the, the solution, and we, you know, we hear this time and time again, and I, I'm taking this as a s, I'm not considering old applications that we've heard, but, you know, this is the same old story where the applicant changed the conditions, went against the resolution that's in front of them, pays the fine, comes back to us, and the solution is to have us okay what they did.
I, I am not asking the board to condone what my client did, I'm, I'm asking the, the board to approve an application that I hope makes this a better site than what it currently is.
But we didn't consider any buffering. Nobody said, you know what? Maybe we should still put some buffering along that parking area.
We do have buffering.
There, there is buffering proposed. There's a six-foot wooden fence.
And...
And the planting area.
And planting area as well.
Mm-hmm.
As well as new street trees, the sidewalk.
This buffering along Merritt we're talking about, there's nothing between or to the east?
To the east, well, we have a six-foot fence that runs from here all the way along Merritt on the front property.
I don't consider fences to be buffering.
That's part one of the buffering. Goes there, goes around the side and along the entire back.
Yes, yes, the site is enclosed with a fence.
We do have all these shrubs planted between the parking and Merritt Street.
Right.
Right behind the fence.
Right.
And then we have a lawn area over here, we can put in more shrubs there if you like, and we do have the street trees on Merritt as well.
Again, that whole area was supposed to be landscaped. But that's what's being proposed, that's what's being proposed.
Yes.
I, you know... I'm done, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's, I guess, carry on with the presentation.
Okay.
I, I know it's, you know, I know it's tough too at this point, but let's carry on with it and we'll decide on, you know, what's in front of us tonight.
Okay. Um, I, I will bring up Lee Klein as my traffic expert to, to go over the, uh, the internal circulation and ingress and egress to the site, as well as the, our meetings with, uh, traffic and engineering and the proposals for safety within the, the road right away.
Okay, and once again, for the record, Mr. Klein has been sworn in tonight, uh, has been qualified, and if you could just state for the record that you understand that you're still under oath.
I understand that I'm still under oath.
Okay.
My license is still current.
Thank you, sorry, yeah, it hasn't expired yet, Trump didn't cancel it yet.
Let's hurry up. Let me get into the circulation, on the screen we have exhibit one, which is a, uh, a plan that shows vehicles that enter, and we're showing a right turn entering in from Merritt into the entrance-only driveway, and then they either go to the left to, to exit out the right turn only onto Merritt, or they come in, circulate, and then exit to the right turn out only on Avenue C. Just to show that that, that circulation works that way. Uh, also, we had, as, uh, our counsel said, we met with the city either via Zoom or in the field or on conference calls about six times in the last two years since September of 2022, uh, to go over this. And we came up with this, we have to move the stop bar, if you look at the word Merritt in the middle of the screen, uh, where the turn, right turn in, we have to move that stop bar back to the west to accommodate this driveway. And then we're putting in the handicap ramps, which are not shown on this one because this was done before we, we met with the city, I guess this last time in the field, we added, uh, handicap ramps to cross right where the word "street" is in Merritt, the S-T in "street," that area, and then we've got one right where the number 450.00 is. We've got that crossing again where there's a stop bar to get across, and then that, to continue east, there's sidewalk on the north side of Merritt Street. So we accommodated pedestrians, we accommodated the vehicles coming in, uh, and then the parking requirement for what we're proposing, we've got the two parking spaces for the office, and that's what's required for that. It's one per 500 square feet, and we're a little over 700 square feet, so we need two. Each service bay, there are six of them, needs three parking spaces, so we need 18, six times three is 18, and between the ones that are on the eastern portion of the lot and the six that are lined up right next to the service bays, we've got the, uh, 18 parking spaces there for a total of 20 parking spaces on site. So that meets the requirements of the parking for the uses that we're proposing. Um, we also, I put together a traffic engineering evaluation report dated May 31st, 2024, and I, just to get on the record, the trip generation that we're proposing, we looked at automobile care center, and we also looked at Quick Lube Vehicle Shop, those are two uses that are in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, 11th Edition. You can either do it by service bay or square footage, and we looked at it both ways, six bays or about 2,672 square feet. And we looked at, the, the highest one was Quick Lube based on six bays, the peak hour of the adjacent street, an hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and an hour between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. We're looking at 18 trips, about 12 coming in, six coming out, in the morning peak one hour, and in the evening peak hour, an hour between 4:00 and 6:00, 16 coming in, 13 coming out, for a total of 29. So we're not looking at a significant amount of traffic, as a matter of fact, I went back and looked at the car wash, the one-tunnel car wash, uh, was gonna generate more traffic than that in the 80, 78 to 80, uh, range in that, in that range. So we're looking at less traffic from this proposed use, we're accommodating the parking, there's no chance really of queuing onto Merritt Street with this type of a use, as you heard from, from Mr. Lewis. Uh, a customer will come in, somebody will check them in the office and either ask them to park in one of the six spots facing the train tracks, or the angled spots will be taken over by one of the employees to park there, or they may pull it in front of the service bay, and again, an employee will take it inside. So we're looking at very little chance of anybody queuing up on, on Merritt Street trying to get into the site. Yeah, and as, and as Mr. Lewis mentioned, I think I mentioned in my circulation, the western driveway on Avenue C is gonna be right turn only, there's gonna be signs, and there were some signs on that uh, previous slide that showed right turn only signs, no left turn signs. Uh, and then the exit to the east, the exit out of the angled parking space area, again, right turn only. And then the entrance from Merritt is gonna be, uh, either, it's gonna be a left in or a right in, and that's why we're moving that stop bar back. So if somebody stopped at that, at that traffic light, traffic signal, then they can make a left turn in on Merritt Street westbound. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Klein? Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein, appreciate it.
Chairman, before I bring up, uh, Mr. Height, I, I think I'm, I'm hearing loud and clear from the, the board that they have a serious issue with the fact that the, uh, the prior resolution and the, the arguments that were made before this board where we were mitigating some of the items that we proposed under the previous application by keeping the, the raised area, uh, as, as landscaped, and, um, that's, that's not what you're seeing today. Um, you know, this, this application does comply with the coverage requirements in the zone. It's 90%, where it's 72. Um, but I, I, I think based off of the fact that, um, what previously had been a mitigating factor is no longer present, I think we have to go back to the drawing board to see if we can add additional landscaping to this site to try and make some of the mistakes that we... to try and make some of the mistakes that were made here whole.
Sure.
So my request would be to adjourn the application. Let us go back to the drawing board and see where we can fill in some holes in the property with some additional landscaping. And on top of that, see if we can make a more significant impact with blocking some of the sightlines with some additional landscaping to beautify the property from the road.
Okay. Understood. Thank you, counsel. Do we need to kind of vote for that? The applicant's adjourning?
Requesting to carry the meeting. So, Mr. Lean, we don't have a date. We're going to renotice, and we're going to carry the application. What are we thinking? Time-wise, obviously, waive time for the board to.
I will put on the record that I waive time for the board to make a decision on this application. My best guess would be either in late October or early November is when we'll probably have something that can be reviewed and approved by planning. And hopefully be back before this board.
The board can accept that, and the matter will be adjourned until a later date, at which time there'll be renotice given.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
While I'm here, I do have two more applications at the end of the evening that I'm going to ask be adjourned for 29A and 31 Monitor.
Okay, so that's going to be Case P2024-0068, minor site plan with C variances for 31 Monitor Street. Do we have a carry date on here, Cam?
It would be October 8.
Okay. So carry due date certain October 8. Item 20, Case P2024-0069, minor site plan with C variances for 29A Monitor Street. Cam, once again, October 8?
Yes.
Okay, carry due date certain October 8. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shalgin?
Are they listed as two different applications, 29A and 31?
Yes. Yes.
Two different. Okay, and we carry both, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No. No, there wasn't a, there wasn't a motion. Counsel, how much time do you think you need here? Given the hour? Can we define very short period of time?
It's only the three-inch binder this time.
Yeah, that's all. Okay, 10 minutes, starting now. Okay, so we're going to call item 18, Case P2024-0056. It's a minor site plan with C variance for 14 Cole Street. Floor is yours, counsel.
Good evening. May I please the board Ronald Shalgin appearing on behalf of the applicant? And I point out to the board that the real applicant is the owner of the building, the gentleman who's seated with me on the right side here. His intention is to move into this property. He owns the property. He's renting an apartment now. He is going to be occupying the addition to this property for his family. So I'd like to call the architect at this time, Eric. He'll walk you through the plans and keep it brief. Start with the page that we suggested.
Right, sure.
So, Mr. Shalgin, I've had the opportunity to review your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing. It is in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for the record.
Okay. I do. My name is Eric, E-R-I-C, Worcester, W-O-R-C-E-S-T-E-R.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. Mr. Worcester, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past, correct?
Well, it would have been several years ago.
Okay. It's still a yes, though?
So, yes.
Okay, thank you. So your license is current in the state of New Jersey today? Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay.
Mr. Worcester, you're the project architect for 14 Cole Street, are you not?
I am.
Would you pull up on the screen the picture of the existing building or the rendering that you have?
Sure.
I think that's a good place to start.
So here we have the major elevations of the building, and if we look at elevation number one, we see the front facade of this existing building at 14 Cole's. The building was determined to be in possession of historical significance that was based off of a determination letter from 2022, so the client and I have kept the building as the front of the building as is and designed the addition around it. So the addition occurs in the back and portions of the rear. Drawing one, you see the front facade, but you also see the addition in the back. And if we go to drawing number two, we see the side elevation where the front elevation is on the left with the stoop shown. And then we see the addition in the back starting roughly where the existing building ends. So that's about 41 feet. And the materials are carried through from the front, which is masonry, carried through to the back in a kind of stepping, almost a counterpoint kind of fashion in order that, for the addition not to just have a sort of hard edge. The rear of the of the addition, which is drawing number three, then, shows the masonry at the bottom, three floors, and then the metal upper floors, which are built around the form of a mansard roof. And this again is a way of kind of keeping the scale down to kind of a residential scale. And it's also a reference to the five-story buildings that are in the back and on the side of the current building. If, those are the main features of the building. I have plans that we could go through that would show that the lower levels have been developed into two duplex units. There's a third floor, floor-through unit, and there is an upper level with a penthouse. And all of the features in this building, in terms of the addition, are modern features, including an elevator, modern windows, there's landscaping in the rear yard, there's balconies, and there's an amenitized roof, which includes a terrace and solar panels on top of the penthouse.
And from your knowledge, it's the intention of the owner to occupy the penthouse. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And he collaborated with you in designing the building that was shown to the board?
Correct.
Okay, now, the only variance that is required is the height variance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Mr. Height will address that in a few moments. That's all I have for this witness.
Can we just identify what that height is from the architect?
Yes. The height overall is 46 feet.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Height? You're still under oath, Mr. Height?
Yes. Recognized, thank you.
Okay. Would you take us through the principal points that justify the variance that we're asking for and initially identify exactly what the variance is?
Yeah, so we are in the R3 district multifamily. It's a permitted use. We're about a block off of Newark Avenue, one of the main mixed-use corridors in the city, near the downtown. We are requesting a maximum building height variance in feet and stories. Again, a C bulk variance request, so we're dealing with either a physical hardship. What I would offer is a flexible standard in terms of the benefits outweighing the detriments. What's proposed is an elevation of 46 feet, and again, that's to the top of the penthouse story, which only occupies a portion of that uppermost fifth story. It's set back substantially from the main addition and from the front facade of the existing structure that runs along Cole Street, so that's the proposed height. What's permitted, as was just mentioned, is 42 feet, so we're in excess of four feet. The proposed addition has been designed to allow for sufficient floor-to-ceiling heights to accommodate the new layouts, the duplexes that will occupy this portion. So in doing so, to create an appropriate floor-to-ceiling height with the first floor being just off grade, we're rising a total of five stories, 46 feet. The R3 district also regulates stories where only four is permitted, but five is proposed. So on this type of lot, we're less than 6,000 square feet, so they do have the lower height standard. But this is a very unique lot, I would say. Some of the benefits in terms of the visibility of the massing, or what I would say lend itself to an appropriate design alternative. Cole Street has an alley that intersects near this property. That alley is the only visible point for the addition. There's no other vantage point from along Newark or further south along Columbus that you would see the main mass, and certainly this addition. It's only from that alleyway. So I do think where the proposed addition is in the rear of the property, set back from the main existing portion of the building that's going to be retained, is an appropriate location on the site. The addition meets all the setback standards and coverage standards of the R3, so it's not a bigger footprint that wouldn't otherwise be permitted. And really, this upper story, the fifth-story penthouse, is to accommodate additional bedroom units for a family-sized, for the applicant's own family to occupy. So it is a diverse type of housing that's being introduced to the overall neighborhood. Those are the positive criteria. We did do an impact statement, a visual impact assessment. I can pull that up. I can set it up if you want to take a look at the shadow study. With respect to the MLUL, again, we are guiding appropriate development. But for the penthouse story, this would be otherwise a compliant building mass in terms of the four stories below. We are establishing an appropriate population density. The permitted density is permitted in the R3 district. There's no density issue or unit count issue. And as the architect mentioned, the design was taken into account in terms of separating the brickwork from the existing structure and the proposed addition. We've also worked in some of the vertical elements at the penthouse and upper stories to create a little bit more differentiation on the fourth and fifth stories. So those are some of the positive aspects from the purposes of land use planning. In terms of the negative aspects, as I mentioned, we did do a visual impact assessment. Based on that and the area of the block that this property sits on, there's very limited views of the proposed addition. It's set back quite a distance from the main frontage, and it will be blended in with the overall roof line and the design of the aesthetics of the facades of the building. So we do believe we mitigated the proposed massing on the fifth story. And again, it complies with the setbacks. There's one property to the north that is vacant along Newark Avenue. So as this is under construction, you would see the construction. I don't know the condition of that property. It is what we call a gap in the streetscape. I don't know if it's associated with parking or anything else of adjacent property, but if that were ever to be filled in, this would, over time, have no visibility from Newark Avenue. In the immediate term, you would see it from that vantage point, but other than that, it's just from the alleyway. So those are the visual impacts. There's really no other impacts because we're only requesting the additional height and in stories and feet. So there's sufficient light and air, there's sufficient separation at the property lines, there's no impacts in any adjacent properties. And in terms of consistency, the adjacent property to the east and to the south are both five- and six-story structures. So it is consistent with with other buildings in the area. I should take that back. There's the restaurant at the immediate corner of Cole's Gringos, and the alley beyond, south beyond that, is a six-story structure.
Yeah, Mr. Height, there's no change in the density that's proposed, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions of Mr. Height?
Okay. I have nothing for Mr. Height. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, I do need to bring Mr. Worcester back up, though.
Okay.
I do have a question that popped up. So let's talk about the mechanical equipment on the roof. I'm assuming those are skylights next to it, correct? Those, as you look at the front elevation, the first front elevation, you have the mechanical equipment off to the right, those angled.
Those are the panels, solar panels.
Oh, okay, okay. Is that, is the mechanical equipment visible from Cole Street? The way I'm looking at it right now?
Yes, it's intended to be screened for that reason.
Okay, do we have?
Kind of from the alley, as you mentioned.
Okay, do we have a detail on the screening?
Here are enlarged elevations, and up on drawing number six, we show a metal scrim, metal post system that would be used for the screening. And those are condensers, because we would have, we'd be using split system, HVAC systems for the apartments.
Okay, is there any screening on the front elevation of that unit?
Yes, if you look at drawing five, it shows sort of the top. It shows the top of the front elevation. And it has screening on that side as well.
Can you identify the screening? I'm just looking at that like it's a unit.
Where I'm circling right now is the screening.
That's a screener? That's the actual... So it's small condensers
Yeah.
in that area? Okay, I'm looking at that as one mechanical unit there.
No, 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 it's, it's meant it's meant to kind of pick up the railing of the penthouse, which is also set back, and the screen are meant to have, they're both in a kind of a modern idiom, and set back from the front of the street and relate more to the addition.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not seeing the setback, that's all.
Oh, well, if I can show you a different drawing, what I mean.
Well, I'm looking at drawing five above it, the side south elevation.
Oh, yeah, if you look to the left, it's, the drawing itself is cut, and you would go another 40 feet to the left to get to the front of the building. Yeah, I can show you a different drawing. So here, for example, and this is drawing one, the section cut shows the units, the condenser units in the screen. That's about 40 feet from the front facade, right there.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm trying to imagine if you're across the.
So, I'm just I'm trying to imagine if you're across the street on Cole Street, looking up at that elevation. Can you see that screening? It, you know, I might be looking at a five-foot spot where I can see that screening. That that's what I'm trying to get down to here.
The, all right, just trying to get this to-
What could be in that drawing, side elevation?
Yeah. Yeah, and the, when I took the initial site sections through the the building to determine where I would place the addition, it was set back far enough from Cole Street, from the other side of Cole Street, so that it wouldn't be visible from that point. And so I-
On site elevation A-
A, right.
That vantage point is from-
Across the street.
Across the street of Cole Street.
From Coles, exactly, right.
And B, site elevation.
That is the front elevation of Coles.
That's across Maxwell Street?
Site elevation B is as if you were standing on, just right in front of the building, and imagine you're looking at the whole building in a in a elevation. So, A is really a section. I'm showing the building behind behind it, the five-story.
Tell me if I'm reading the drawing wrong. You have A and B, and then you have number four key map with As and Bs.
Yes, so the A shows how the section is is cut and shown in the the drawing entitled A. Likewise, with B.
So, is B the vantage point from Maxwell?
Well, an elevation drawing is is a flattened, it's not a perspective, it's flattened. So, it's like a the plane of B is is being where the buildings are projected onto, and then you're looking at that as a picture. And that's the same with A.
So, the the A elevation?
A is basically the side elevation.
I understand it's the side elevation, but maybe maybe I'm reading it wrong. What is the diagonal line cutting across site elevation A?
That's a sight line.
Okay, so that's your viewpoint?
That's the view.
From Maxwell, or from Cole.
No, A is from Coles.
B is from Maxwell.
Yes.
So, if you're on Maxwell, that's what you can see from that side of the street.
Yes.
From Coles on A, you can't really see anything past that parapet.
There isn't a parapet, though.
The top of the roof.
The top of the roof line.
Right.
The the mechanical screening isn't depicted there. So, the mechanical screening comes up how high?
Thirty inches.
Okay.
From the parapet height and from the roof height, it's forty-two inches.
Okay, and that's a and that's a flat roof, right?
It's a flat roof, and it'd be sloped to drain. There'd be an internal leader system, just like any other flat roof.
Sure. Okay, no, that answers my question. That's I was just trying to get down to what that was, if it was screened or not. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing it up. All right, counsel, is there anything else? Or does anybody else have any questions?
I acknowledge receipt of the planner's report dated August ninth, as well as the JCMUA report, which is dated August twelfth. I don't know if that should be marked into evidence, Mr. Mr. Lampy, if you don't want-
Does not need to be marked.
And we agreed to be bound by the terms of both of these.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public's closed. Sophia, do you have anything you want to add for us?
No, planning staff has no comments.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero zero five six as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thank you, counsel. So, I'll entertain memorialization of resolutions at this point.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. There's fourteen, I believe. Number one is resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two three dash zero three two, West Side Avenue Holdings LLC, address seven ninety-one dash eight oh five, West Side Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one four seven zero five, lot six through ten and twenty-five, decided on Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances. Second resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of Rose F LLC, two ninety-six Old Bergen Road, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three oh six, application number P two zero two four dash zero zero five zero, decided August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, application for a minor site plan approval. Jersey, third resolution is the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of thirty-four thirty-eight Kennedy Boulevard LLC, application number P two zero two four dash zero zero seven one, decided on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, memorialized September tenth, twenty twenty-four, application for a minor site plan approval with C variances and design waiver slash exemption relief. Fourth resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City in the matter of nine eighty-two Summit LLC, application number P two zero two four dash zero zero seven two, at nine eighty-two Summit Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three oh seven, decided August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, application for a minor site plan approval. Fifth resolution of the City of Jersey City in the matter of Grand Jersey Group LLC, one eighty-five Mama Street, also known as fifty-two Etna Street, block one five eight zero one, lot three dot zero two, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero nine three, decided July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations. Number six is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City finding the proposed amendments to scatter site redevelopment plan are consistent with the City of Jersey City master plan and recommending to the municipal council to the City of Jersey City that said amendment be adopted. Number seven is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for preliminary and final major site plan with deviation submitted by eighty-five Monitor LLC at eighty-five dash eighty-seven Monitor Street, block one nine zero zero three, lot ten, case number on that is P two zero two three dash zero 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 nine. Eighth resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City is applicant Patricia Raffo's property, seventy-seven dash seventy-nine Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one four three zero four, lot three, for a minor subdivision with C variances, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero one seven, hearing date was August sixth, twenty twenty-four. Number nine, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant A Higher Ground Dispensary LLC, property is at forty-one Marin Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one five nine zero one, lot nineteen, for a conditional use approval, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero seven four, hearing date August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, result approval. Tenth resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant six fifty-one Tunnel Leav LLC for amended preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk signage variances, block one nine zero one, lots one dot zero one, Jersey City, New Jersey, case number on that was P two zero two four dash zero zero nine seven. Number eleven, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Matthew Walsh for minor subdivision, approval at two thirteen Congress Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one four zero five, lot nine, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero six seven. Number twelve, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for amended preliminary and final major site plan with deviation submitted by AM Development LLC at three oh six Johnson Ave, block one seven five zero two, lot sixteen, case number on that was P two zero two four dash zero zero two six. Number thirteen, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant nine hundred Bergen LLC for an extension of final major site plan approval with deviations at nine hundred Bergen Ave, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one zero seven zero one, lot four, case number on that was P two zero two four dash zero one five one. Final resolution number fourteen of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, applicant Jess Realty LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances at forty-six Congress Street, also known as three eighty-six New York Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one seven zero five, lot twenty-six, case number P two three dash zero zero eight nine.
All right, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cam, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin. Commissioner Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor to memorialize resolutions.
Thank you. Do we need an executive session? Anybody move to adjourn? Okay, thank you, guys. We're adjourned. Appreciate it.